March first, twenty twenty-two, the six-thirty meeting to order. And I'll have the clerk call the roll, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice President Martin.
Present.
Vice President Martin is present. Alder Miyatz.
Present.
Alder Miyatz is present. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Vidver.
Present.
Alder Vidver is present. Alder Helia. Sorry, Alder Helia is present, I can see here. President Abbas.
Present.
President Abbas is present. Sorry, Alder Burus.
Present.
Alder Burus is present. Alder Benford.
Present.
Alder Benford is present. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is present. Alder Carter. Not present yet. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry.
Here.
Alder Curry is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is present. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Foster is present. Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Furman is present. Alder Halverson.
Present.
Alder Halverson is present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present. Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Lemmer is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we have the meeting instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the common council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I want to start our meeting tonight with just a moment of recognition for what's happening in Ukraine and in many other areas with conflict across the world that maybe don't get as much attention as Ukraine, but particularly because it's been so much front and center for us in the news to acknowledge the incredible hardship and devastation that the Ukrainian people are going through. And I also wanted to let you know that we will be lighting the Madison Municipal Building in the colors of the Ukrainian flag. It's lit tonight in purple for International Women's Day or for the beginning of Women's History Month, but we'll revert back to the Ukrainian flag after that, for as long as it's necessary. I'd also like to just remind us that we do have a new format. I will again be muddling through that new format and remembering to not make motions on the public hearing items right away. But we'll just move a little slowly through that so everybody can follow and know where we're at. And also remind folks, as I always do, that we are all really here because we want to try and do the best for the city of Madison and to please lead with kindness and respect, in particular to not use profanity in your remarks, anyone, Alders, staff, folks here, to speak to us and to just try and remember that everybody is trying to do their best and what they think is right. And then finally, I will ask for any disclosures or recusals on today's agenda. Alder Lemmer?
Thank you. I need to recuse myself from item forty-one, please.
Thank you. Alder will note you as being recused from item forty-one. Any other disclosures or recusals? All right. So our first item is a presentation of poetry and it is my absolute pleasure to turn it over once again to our poet laureate, Angie Trudel Vasquez. And Angie, thank you for continuing to be our poet and for bringing poetry into this space.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my pleasure to be here with you and to be in this space, and I'm so grateful to be in this space and on this platform. And it is my great honor today to introduce a new poet to this group. His name is Richard Vargas. I'm going to read his bio and then he'll read the poem that we selected. Richard Vargas was born in Compton, California. He earned his BA at Cal State University Long Beach, where he studied under Gerald Lachlan. He edited, published five issues of The Tequila Review from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty, publishing early works by such great poets as Jimmy Santiago Baca, Alberto Rios, and Nyla Northson, and many more. His first book, McLife, was featured twice during February two thousand and six on Garrison Keillor's Writer's Almanac. A second book, American Jesus, was published by Tia Chucha Press in two thousand and seven. His third book, Greenwicha: Revisited, was published April two thousand and fourteen by Press fifty-three and was featured once more on the Writer's Almanac. Vargas received his MFA from the University of New Mexico in two thousand and ten, where he workshopped his poetry with the Joy Harjo, our current National U.S. poet laureate. He was recipient of the two thousand and eleven Taos Summer Writers Conference's Hispanic Writer Award, was on the faculty of the two thousand and twelve tenth National Latino Writers Conference, and facilitated a workshop at the two thousand and fifteen Taos Summer Writers Conference. Vargas also edited, published The Master Tequila Review from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, featuring poets from across the country. Richard has read his poetry to audiences in Los Angeles, Chicago, St. Louis, Madison, Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Indianapolis, and Boulder. His fourth book will be published this summer. Currently, he resides in Monona, Wisconsin. Please welcome the poet, Richard Vargas.
Thank you, Angie, for that introduction and for inviting me to read tonight. I want to thank the mayor and the council for providing this sacred space for community poetry. That's very important. The poem I'm reading tonight is dedicated to the people of the Ukraine, dedicated to the people of Yemen and Palestine and all other populations throughout the world that are going through the turmoil of trying to find a better life for themselves and their families. The poem is titled "I Am Waiting for a Peace." Not the peace they make the rest of us fight over, a few crumbs tossed our way over the walls of their gated communities or from the balconies of an exclusive high-rise. I'm talking about the pie with the flaky crust, delicate and buttery on the tongue, with the sweet and tart filling made from fresh fruit picked with expert care by dark, calloused hands belonging to people named Juanita, Diego, Elena, or Jorge. I am waiting for a piece of the pie with a silky, smooth filling that melts in my mouth, the meringue or whipped cream topping, light and airy, as the taste of a summer cloud, providing shade for a wedding or cover for an approaching drone. I am waiting to be seated with people from all over the world, fellow human beings of all colors and face, the men, women, and children exploited or murdered in my name. I am waiting for all of us to be served a piece of the pie, the room suddenly quiet and calm as the soothing smell from the oven works its magic. We will take a bite and smile, a knowing glance passing back and forth across the room, table to table. Then, suddenly, someone begins to sing, someone has a story to tell or a poem to recite. We share the same language, laughing and crying together, until everyone agrees to start over from the beginning, the first time our tribes met and stood face to face, when it was all different and new, but this time with pie. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you see the virtual round of applause that you're getting. Thank you for bringing poetry into this space. All right, as per our new order of business, we'll move to the consent agenda. President Abbas?
At this time, a consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action listed for each item except number one item which have registrants wishing to speak, number two items which require an extra-only roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, number three items which all the person have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Agenda items three to five are public hearing items. The following items are extra-majority items. Extra-majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll caller or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number forty-two, legislative file number six-nine-seven-five-six, a resolution amending the two thousand and twenty-two Public Health Operating Budget to accept three hundred thousand dollars for Dade County American Rescue Plan Act, state and local recovery fund to support the Violence Prevention Unit and authorizing the Director of Public Health, Madison Dade County, to sign a subrecipient agreement with Dade County, required fifteen votes. Additional agenda items with recommendation made from the floor, agenda item number thirty-nine, legislative file number six-nine-nine-nine-zero, amending section thirty-three-point-one-three-two to establish procedures for hiring of the Common Council Chief of Staff. The recommended action from Common Council Executive Committee is to refer it to May tenth CCEC and Common Council meeting. Agenda item number forty, legislative file number seven-zero-zero-five-five, amending section thirty-three-point-one-three-two of Madison General Audience to specify hiring as supervision of Common Council Office staff. Recommended action of CCECs to adopt. Agenda item number forty-three, legislative file number six-nine-seven-eight-seven, authorizing metro transit to purchase additional fuel as needed at track. Rate should usage necessarily above the contracted monthly amount of eighty-two thousand three hundred thirty-three gallon of diesel from sole-source vendor, energy solution partner. Recommended action is to adopt legislative file, agenda item number forty-four, legislative file number six-nine-nine-zero-nine, authorizing a non-competitive service contract with the Control Works, Inc. for three-year H-WX software maintenance and support agreement. Report from the Finance Committee is to adopt. Agenda item number forty-five, legislative file number six-nine-nine-two-seven, recreate vacant position number two-seven-eight-two from a operations general supervisor to an operations manager in the metro operating budget. Recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number forty-six, legislative file number six-nine-nine-two-eight, recreate vacant position number two-seven-five-three from a para-transit program manager to an operations manager in metro operating budget. Recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number forty-seven, legislative file number six-nine-nine-three-two, recreate vacant position number two-six-seven-two and four-two-zero-four from maintenance general supervisors to maintenance general maintenance manager in the metro operating budget. Recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number forty-eight, legislative file number six-nine-nine-three-six, recreate vacant position number two-eight-five-two from account clerk three to a marketing customer service manager in metro operating budget. Recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number forty-nine, legislative file number six-nine-nine-five-six, authorizing execution of a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Madison and O'Neil Properties LLC or its assigns for the purchase of the property located in the Center for Industrial and Commerce Business Park in seventeen. Alder Manette, recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number fifty, legislative file number six-nine-nine-six-zero, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Harris Golf Course, Inc. for the lease of a golf cart fleet on a four-years term for the city of Madison Golf Course's recommendation. Recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number fifty-one, legislative file number six-nine-nine-six-four, substitute authorizing five-year non-competitive purchase of goods from Frank Beer Distributor LLC, a sole-source provider of certain brands of fermented milk beverages to be sold at the city of Madison Golf Course's. Recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item number fifty-two, legislative file number six-nine-nine-six-six, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a professional service agreement with the Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc. for pre-design planning, preliminary design, public participation support, final construction drawings, and specification, permitting, bidding, construction administration, and commissioning for the unit well nineteen iron, magnesium, and radium treatment system. Recommended action is to adopt. File number, legislative file, agenda item number fifty-seven, legislative file number six-nine-nine-two-zero, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a multi-year comparatively selected service contract with Culvers Clevers Devices LTD for a comprehensive transit technology solution for the metro transit. Recommended action is re-refer to March seventh Finance Committee meeting and March fifteenth Common Council meeting. Item requested for exclusion is agenda item number fifty-three, legislative file number six-nine-nine-eight-seven, authorizing the allocation of up to seven hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, aid local fiscal recovery fund to support the community-based organization serving undocumented immigrant residents as a result of a competitive RFP process conducted by the Community Development Division and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into agreements with those agency to implement the designated program and services. Recommended action from the Finance Committee is to adopt the alternative V three.
Thank you, President Abbas. Are there other items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda, Alder Foster?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item forty, please.
Item forty? Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifty-nine, please.
Item forty and item fifty-nine. Are any other items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? All right, seeing none, then let's just go through that one more time. I'm wanting to give staff a little moment here. There are some folks who are registered or having trouble getting in to the meeting. And so, agenda items three through five are public hearing items. We will record a unanimous vote on item forty-two. We have recommendations on the following items. Item thirty-nine, the recommendation, I believe, is to refer to the five-ten council meeting, is that correct? President Abbas, yes. Okay, so the item on number thirty-nine, the recommendation is to refer to the five-ten council meeting on forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-two. The recommendation is to adopt. On fifty-seven, the recommendation is to re-refer to the three-seven Finance Committee meeting and the three-fifteen Common Council meeting. Our items for exclusion tonight are forty, fifty-three, and fifty-nine. I'd also like to note that on item eleven and fifty-four, we have registrants available to answer questions. And I believe you all have the list in your email. Are there questions for registrants for items on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Also want to note that on item fifty-eight, you should have received an updated list from the clerk's office. I just want to bring that to your attention. All right. Anything else on the consent agenda? All right, so now, President Abbas, a motion?
A motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
We've been seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and all of those recommendations. And we will go on to public comment. And I know that we may revisit this in the future, but I am going to open and close all the public hearings for form's sake at this point in time and also to give staff additional time to figure out the registrants issue. So, item number three is Legistar six-nine-one-three-seven, open a public hearing on a new license for the international. We have no registrants on item three, oh, close that public hearing. Item four is Legistar six-nine-five-seven-seven, I'll open a public hearing on a new license for Ohms Liquor and More. We have no registrants on item four, I'll recess that public hearing. Item five is Legistar six-nine-five-eight-three, open a public hearing on a license transfer for Koi Sushi. We have no registrants on item five, I'll close that public hearing. It's the end of our public hearings. And so we will now go on to all other public comment. And the only item we have people wishing to speak on is item fifty-three. So we'll work our way down this list and just be aware that we may have folks that are unable to get in and we're trying to work that out. So we may have to jump around a little bit in the order. So on item fifty-three, our first registrant is Kazua Avage of Grandview Boulevard, representing Freedom, Inc., to be followed by Jessica Williams.
Mayor, I do not see Kazua in the list or Jessica.
All right, how about Shiva Badar Silaf of District Five, to be followed by Steve Maurice?
Yeah, the meeting wasn't open till six-thirty, when the previous meeting ended. So if people want to try again, you should be able to get in.
This is Shiva. I'm hoping you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Alders. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on item fifty-three, which is the funds allocated for undocumented individuals in our city. I want your first-second minute to thank Yolanda Shelton Morris, our city community resource managers, who really center the understanding of the role of committee and the important roles that committees have in having focused discussions on item under their purview with residents who are appointed to committees for their knowledge and lived experience. That is what the Community Services Committee did last week. We listened to long testimony, which you will listen to unfortunately again tonight. And I say unfortunately because it takes a lot of emotional toll for all of us who are here this evening. We discussed the recommendations that were put forth by the staff. We deliberated and put some recommendation with thoughtful thinking before you. I want to say also that equity is not about all and everybody. It's not about everybody getting the same thing. It's about centering the issues that impact each community, centering Black Lives Matter when it comes to criminal justice and law enforcement. In conversation tonight, centering the community who's unfortunately the most impacted by our broken immigration system is critical. That is the Latinx community. Facts are indisputable. Seventy-three percent is the conservative estimate of the number of undocumented people who are Latinx. Eighty to ninety percent is the real-life estimate by those of us who day in and day out work with undocumented communities. It would be great for us to have resources to create opportunities to try for every single undocumented person in our community. But you know better than anybody that resources are limited. So the unfortunate choice that you make as Alders every time you meet is to use limited resources to make the biggest impact and the highest impact. Lastly, I ask you to listen to the voices closest to the people and their communities. That is how we transform together. The recommendations that are before you are based on lived experience, based on those of us who have spent twenty-five years of our life in this city working directly, day in and day out, with undocumented people. I hope that you will take to heart the commentary that you will receive tonight and that you will both center the voices of those most impacted by really focusing how to spend limited resources and that you will also honor and engage in understanding of the deep work that is done at the community level in this city. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you tonight.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Steve Maurice of District Fourteen, representing the Catholic Multicultural Center, to be followed by Baltazar De Anda Santana.
Hello, thank you. I am the Associate Director of the Catholic Multicultural Center. The CMC served two thousand and seventeen unduplicated individuals and provided over six thousand five hundred instances of service last year. The people we serve come from at least seventy-five countries of origin and speak twenty-six different first languages. We are truly a multicultural center that serves a cross-section of the community. We are truly a multicultural center that serves a cross-section of the community. Of those served, approximately one-third were undocumented by the definition of this grant, RFP. I would ask the Council tonight to support the resolution before you that originated from the Finance Committee last evening. Even though that may be of concern to some members because it is not the usual process, it is the correct action to take because it honors the work that the city staff put into the RFP process. And more importantly, provides funding in the most inclusive and equitable manner to the vulnerable immigrant communities that call Madison home. I would encourage you not to put the process before the people. I would also encourage you not to pit immigrant communities against one another, nor the agencies that serve them. All the agencies do good work and serve the clients with professionalism. The CDD staff recommendations take into account a number of considerations that make them the most fair and equitable option. So I would strongly encourage you to support the current resolution. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Balthazar De Anda Santana of District Fourteen, representing the Latino Academy of Workforce Development, to be followed by Fabiola Hamden.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, City Council members, for your service, Mayor Satya, and city staff. This is just so painful. We should be fighting for seven million dollars, seventy million dollars of seven hundred million dollars. Our undocumented community has done so much for our community. Our undocumented community, many of them essential workers, kept us alive during the pandemic. We shall all work together to bring more funds and resources to protect our undocumented community who live in Madison. I'm here to oppose the alternate resolution with staff recommendations and support the substitute with Community Service Committee recommendations. The organizations recommended by Community Service Committee, which include Centro Hispano, SILK, the African Center, Vera Court, and Rice Wisconsin, the Catholic Multicultural Center, and Rainbow Project, have a track record of having served the undocumented community for many years. The organizations listed above do not need to come up with a process. These organizations understand our undocumented community. Our undocumented community already trusts these organizations. Organizations such as Centro Hispano, Vera Court, and the Latino Academy worked together during the pandemic to distribute funds to undocumented community when a national emergency was declared. Tonight, many organizations who are here are being asked to prove how much work we do with the undocumented community. It feels like a contest to have to demonstrate who knows our undocumented community better. As a former undocumented person, I can tell you that I never thought of the day when we had to prove, where I had to prove that we have the capacity to work with our undocumented community. I was asked today what would it mean for Latino Academy if it doesn't receive the funding. Unfortunately, we will not be able to continue the work that, together with the LCA, we have started in two thousand and twenty. It will also mean that undocumented students will once again have to go to other organizations they do not know or trust to get these funds. Please don't do this. Our students have already crossed the border once. And I want to repeat that our students already crossed the border once. They already came looking for a piece of that American pie. Don't have them go through this trauma or searching for resources at unknown places. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Fabiola Hamden of District Three, to be followed by Aissa Oliveras.
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, and all the Alders for all the work you do. And as you said, Mayor, tonight we are here because we care about this community, because we are the fabric of this community, because we want to have a better life. So I am in opposition of the alternate resolution with staff recommendations. And I strongly support the substitute with Community Service Committee recommendations. I believe the substitute does justice to the Madison's undocumented residents. Because there were only few organizations and agencies that came as a resource to undocumented residents during these unprecedented times that we are living in, during COVID. We did not know what to do with our undocumented folks that were knocking out our doors, our agencies. They didn't have stimulus checks. They didn't have anywhere to go. And the Latino Academy with Centro Hispano and many of us put together a fund and we tried to help as much as we can. Tonight, I represented myself. As a social worker in the Immigration Affairs Office, I witnessed every day the gap in services for this population. I work with all immigrants, believe me, all immigrants, with the Afghan refugees just came, with all immigrants. But by far, the majority of our undocumented clients I work with are from the Latinx community. I will tell you, over seventy percent. I work closely with the agencies recommended by the Community Service Committee. These agencies do amazing work because they have the trust and the respect from our undocumented residents. Not only that they have a track record of serving the most needy families. I really trust you know well how vital is that the city allocates funding to organizations that have experienced providing services for the undocumented families. I also trust that you are listening to what our community members working with undocumented families are expressing regarding the funding they need to continue providing services to undocumented families. Please, I am urging you to support the substitute with Community Service Committee recommendations. I have no doubt that the funding allocated to the organizations under these recommendations is the best investment our great city of Madison can make to alleviate the need of undocumented, the need of the undocumented families, sorry. A little emotional. Finally, I want to take, I really wanted you to understand. Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Aissa Oliveras of District Eleven, representing the Community Immigration Law Center, to be followed by Carmel Capati.
Good evening. I would like to start my brief comment today by thanking you, Mayor Satya, the City Council, and the staff of the Community Development Division for considering all of the applications for this ARPA funding. My name is Aissa Oliveras, and I am an immigration attorney, specifically the managing attorney for the Community Immigration Law Center, or SILK. I am here to express my support for the full recommendations made by the Community Services Committee, which include funding for the Community Immigration Law Center's new proposed project to serve undocumented asylum seekers in Madison. The needs of the undocumented population have been exacerbated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and one of those is access to justice. The Community Immigration Law Center, or SILK, is an inclusive organization that serves the legal needs of undocumented immigrants from all around the world. Our work with the immigrant community is well-established through the free walk-in legal clinic we have run since two thousand and nine that has served individuals from one hundred and sixty different countries. Our universal representation program that we've run since two thousand and seventeen and currently through the asylum orientations we provide. Unique to most legal service providers, all of our work is provided at zero cost. While our programming is offered to all, the contact that we have had with asylum seekers over the last two years has been overwhelmingly Latinx and Spanish-speaking. Unfortunately, this is where the need currently lies, but with an ever-changing global landscape, this population can quickly change. The reason a program addressing the needs of local asylum seekers is important is that while they are on a path to seeking protection in our community, navigating that path is difficult and loaded with very specific guidelines, high legal standards, and interactions with multiple agencies. Asylum seekers are overwhelmingly new to our community and have a high need for connection to the resources necessary to navigate the city of Madison. As you have seen, the undocumented community in Madison is a diverse community that needs access to a variety of programs and resources, like all of the ones recommended by the Community Services Committee. SILK works closely together as community partners with those recommended agencies. There was not nearly enough funding to cover all of the great work proposed. I hope that your vote today will be to support the Community Service Committee's recommendations in full. I also hope that past today's vote, the Council will take this experience into account when allocating future funds for community organizations committed to the work of ensuring our undocumented community has meaningful access to not just survive, but to thrive in our Madison community for a piece of that pie. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Carmel Capati of District Fourteen, representing the Catholic Multicultural Center, to be followed by Liliam Post.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Alders, for the opportunity to provide brief comments tonight. I'm the Immigration Staff Attorney at Catholic Multicultural Center, or CMC. And I'm here just to tell you a little bit about the people that we serve at the Immigration Legal Services Program, as it will provide just a sample of the families and individuals I met with yesterday and today. I met with a lawful permanent resident from the Ukraine who wants to apply for her daughter and her granddaughter to come to the United States. Her daughter is currently hiding in a bunker right now due to the civil unrest there. I met with Iraqi refugee parents with a special-needs son who are awaiting their green cards, along with a refugee from the Democratic Republic of the Congo who would like to travel to Uganda. Today, I met with an Afghan parolee who was evacuated with his brother in September of two thousand and twenty-one. He is desperately trying to bring his wife to the United States after a recent threat by the Taliban to her family. I also met with an asylum seeker from Nicaragua, who was being supported by retired dairy farmer and his wife, along with an Afghan mother, was trying to petition for her son, who had to flee Afghanistan to Turkey with his fiance and baby. And finally, my day ended with a meeting with a Guatemalan artist seeking to become a U.S. citizen. I share this information with you today to give you simply a glimpse of the wide tapestry of immigrant communities CMC serves. By doing so, I am in no way trying to diminish the work of any other agency seeking funding. We all do important work, as we've all mentioned, for our vibrant immigrant community. The work of CMC truly is inclusive and far-reaching. In two thousand and twenty-one, the top five countries that CMC's Immigration Legal Services Program served were Mexico, Afghanistan, the Gambia, Cuba, and Colombia. One of the most important parts for CMC's mission is to never turn away anyone due to inability to pay. The services required by these individuals cannot be obtained anywhere other than by CMC. By allowing these crucial funds to be distributed evenly amongst our multicultural organizations, we can continue to provide legal, robust advocacy with accessible fees to an ever broader range of unrepresented members of our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Liliam Post of District Fourteen, representing the Catholic Multicultural Center, to be followed by Laura Green.
Buenas tardes. My name is Lilian Post, and I work at the CMC, but I have experienced more than twenty years working in this community. With many agencies, all my life, I have been learning how to help the person and how to help individually the immigrant, no matter from where. If I don't know the language, I use the Google, and they help me with French, with Sahali, and other languages. I have been working in this community for more than thirty years. I see firsthand the struggles by immigrants in our community face and how there are not enough resources to support undocumented people. I too was once an immigrant new to this community in trying to navigate a new language, culture, and society. I am passionate about using my skills and experience to serve our people. People who are in need, with each immigrant walking through our doors, seeking help from the CMC. All we can do is support families the best we can. With more funds, we can offer much more support to meet the needs of our clients who are in extreme need of financial assistance to meet their basic needs. I wanted to tell you that I met a lot of immigrants who they don't have a big bag. They have just a little hand, sometimes carry those bags in their bag. This amazing the CMC, how much we help. We have more, we help. It's incredible. People who are homeless, people in danger of losing housing, people who have just arrived in this country with next to nothing. We see undocumented people without a driver's license, so they need a safe transportation like a bus pass. We tell them how to get into the bus, where to go and pay for the voucher, or how to to move in the bus system. And thinking about this, also, we need a safe transportation. We at the center, we see seniors who cannot afford basic over-the-counter medical expenses. We see people who have been struggling to obtain employment. And one of the things that I like is to get unemployment, little, big, a lot of employment for the people because if
And that's time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Laura Green of District Fourteen, representing the Catholic Multicultural Center, to be followed by Veronica Vega.
Laura, you should see a prompt to unmute.
Thank you for taking on the much-needed task of distributing funds to support undocumented individuals in our community. At the Catholic Multicultural Center, we see firsthand how many immigrants in our community are in great need of this assistance offered by the city. As a social service provider, we know that the needs are so great that no one agency can fully meet any one community in need. This is why we need a strong network of providers throughout the city, each offering their own unique services to the population they are most capable of reaching. This is why the CMC supports the City Finance Council's proposal, which spreads the funding more equitably among more agencies. Each of these agencies that applied is more than capable of getting funds into the hands of undocumented immigrants who could use some extra support. Each of these agencies is largely serving their own unique population with little overlap between clients served at each agency. And each of these proposals offers to get funds to undocumented individuals in a different way. So if we can spread more of the funds more evenly between more agencies, we are ensuring that these city funds reach more people and do the most good possible. At the CMC, our focus is integrating these funds into existing programs that are designed to help our immigrant brothers and sisters in the long term. The bulk of the funds in our proposal would assist clients through our Employment Search Assistance Office with needs they have beyond employment. A smaller portion of funds would be used to help the lowest-income clients of our Immigration Legal Services Program. Short-term financial assistance in obtaining legal immigration services leads to long-term stability and financial independence for our clients. It would be wonderful if we could see more funds devoted to this cause in the near future. We want to see the current limited funds offered reach the most vulnerable immigrants in our community as possible. This can be achieved by spreading the seven hundred thousand dollars evenly across more agencies, each with different populations served, which more closely aligns with the current resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Veronica Vega of District Fourteen, or excuse me, District Seventeen, to be followed by Gloria Reyes.
Veronica, you should see a prompt to unmute. Might be behind a window. Veronica, again, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Veronica Vega. And I do work for a court agency. And I'm sorry, every time I touch this topic, it's very sensitive, since I work straight with the community in me. And this night actually is very interesting because I am missing my son. I'm trying to be here, trying I'm trying to be here to try to get some money for my community that day. And we can be asking this because every agency needs in the search to have some of this money. And I am here in a station on the African resolution after this.
Uh, looks like we lost.
Oh, I think we might have lost Veronica.
She's still in the last. Yeah, not responding. Yep.
Alright, well, um, uh, can the clerk tell me how much time she had used?
She used one minute and fourteen seconds.
Okay, um, if we can get her back, we'll allow her the rest of the time. So then Gloria Reyes of District seventeen, to be followed by Zoraida Salcedo.
Great. I thank you, Mayor and Common Council. I come to you tonight as a member of the Latino Consortium for Action in opposition of item fifty-three and the alternative resolution and urge you to vote to support the substitute resolution from the Community Services Committee recommendations. As we are entering this phase of the post-pandemic crisis, this is not the time to waver in our support of our most vulnerable populations. We need to invest and go all in to invest today in order to prevent significant challenges into the future. Organizations such as Centro Hispano, Vera Court, Latino Academy, and other organizations listed in the Community Services Committee Recommendations hold a history of supporting our undocumented community and have stepped up during critical times in our history to advance and impact the lives of our undocumented community. When I served as deputy mayor, myself and other leaders stepped up to help support our undocumented immigrants when immigration enforcement threatened our city and county, never asking for additional funding, but just stepped up to protect our Madison residents and work closely with schools, families, and government leaders. During COVID, these same organizations continue to lead us to help support the most vulnerable, silent, undocumented community. We can't forget our history as we are planning for investment today and into the future. As I mentioned, this is not the time to waver in our commitment to organizations who have history and have demonstrated success in impacting the lives of our most doc, undocumented, of our undocumented residents who add to the vibrancy and the economic vitality of our community. This is one-time funding for basic immediate needs, and organizations with a track record serving immediate needs of undocumented communities should be funded as recommended by the Community Services Committee. I understand the challenges of making financial decisions to disseminate funds to a list of good organizations who are doing great work. I urge you to consider equity, prior history, and take target, and take a targeted approach to investing in those organizations that have the specific expertise and track record in our community serving our undocumented community. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight and your commitment to our community.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Zoraida Salcedo of District seven, to be followed by Karen Collier.
Uh, Mayor, there's no one by that name on the list. Karen is here.
Karen Coller of District fourteen, to be followed by Norma Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, um, City Council members. Uh, buenas noches a mis compañeros en la línea. Sabemos que esto es duro, pero aquí vamos, verdad? Um, so I'm here, Mayor, because, um, like you mentioned, I too want a better Madison. And by that, what I mean is a real deep commitment to the Latinx voice. I'm the proud executive director of Centro Hispano of Dade County. It pains me, but because of this commitment, I really need to oppose the alternate, the staff recommendations, and support the substitute Community Services Recommendations. The RFP calls for support to the undocumented community. We've had a crisis now for over two years, where the fastest-growing segment of the city and the one with the largest percentage of undocumented, the Latinx community, has been unable to be supported with adequate bilingual, bicultural healing strategies, and I emphasize the word healing. That work has been taken up by organizations like Centro and the Latinx Consortium for Action. I have said this over and over again, and some of you have listened, reached out and asked how you could help. How you can help now is that we can take this opportunity to do better. These funds should raise up organizations where leadership best reflects the undocumented experience in this community. Because that is what we need to drive the greatest impact alongside our community. I am not looking to emerge out of this better. I want us to emerge out of this stronger. We don't have much. Like many others have mentioned, the seven hundred thousand dollars have to be coordinated and strategically aligned through orgs that have deep trust in neighborhoods. This isn't a time to support individual programs and services. A lot of good work is being done in the city, but that is not the time. Unfortunately, from my perspective, the process was flawed when this was made to be a competitive RFP. When that happened, the message was, we are leaving this up to you. This is a community that deserves attention and more funds, like we've all mentioned. I've asked that in many other occasions, but the fact is, and I've learned that that's not the reality that we have. So if the city is prioritizing and wants its residents to really drive decision-makings when it comes to a number of decisions in the city, including this one, then with limited funds, please, please support the substitute Community Services Recommendation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Norma Gallegos of District twenty, to be followed by Fernando Cano Espina.
Hello, um, good night. Um, my name is Norma, um, Gallegos. I am the board chair of the Latino Professionals Association and member of the Latinx Consortium for Action. Thank you, Ma- Mayor and Alders, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to oppose the alternate resolution with staff recommendations under item number fifty-three and in full support of the substitute with Community Services Committee Recommendations. It takes a very small amount of time to do an internet search or Google it, Google it if you wish, and figure out who were the leading organizations in Dade County that supported undocumented community members at the beginning and throughout the pandemic. Those organizations are the ones recommended by the Community Services Committee. They are the ones that have been here for undocumented individuals and families, not just during the pandemic, but decades before the pandemic, during ICE raids, during family separations, and many other threats that our undocumented community faces every day. These organizations are the ones that have advocated and distributed rent checks, provided mental health and health support to thousands of undocumented individuals and families during the pandemic when the system and the government forgot about them, and these organizations continue to do so. While many of these, while many of the organizations that apply for this recovery grant might serve immigrants, they do not necessarily serve undocumented individuals. And it is crucial, it is essential to distinguish and understand this when making this type of decisions. Eighty to ninety percent of undocumented individuals are Latinx, and organizations recommended by the Community Services Committee are the ones serving the Latinx community in its majority, if not in its totality. Please take some time to reflect about this fact. These organizations understand and feel the pain because, trust me, it takes years and years to navigate, understand, and address the experience of an undocumented individual, let alone those of thousands of families. These organizations are the ones that have built systems, that have advocated and that have built trust among undocumented community members to make sure they get the resources and services that they need. It is disheartening that once again, here we are, asking you to trust those who have done the job for decades, and I hope that today, before you make a decision, take a few minutes to reflect who are these funds designed to impact. And again, it is not about equality, it's about equity. This is why I ask you to fully support the substitute with Community Services Committee Recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Fernando Cano Espina of District twelve, representing Rice, Wisconsin, to be followed by Rachel Deutering.
Good evening. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. We at Rice are grateful to be selected as one of the organizations recommended to receive funds for services for undocumented individuals in the city of Madison. As a community service organization, Rice has experience working with diverse populations, providing early childhood, crisis respite care, care coordination, and mental health services across the city. In our years of working with undocumented members of the community, we have come to know many community organizations that are doing a wonderful job. We understand that it's difficult to try to select from a list of very good organizations, knowing that in reality, the need is so big that they should all be fully funded. Rice is honored to be recommended for funding both by the staff recommendation and by the Community Services Committee. However, we are here supporting the substitute resolution by the Community Services Committee because we know that the organizations recommended for funding in that resolution are working with the majority of the undocumented individuals and families in our community. Fully funding Centro Hispano, fully funding Centro Hispano and the Latino Academy, and funding the other organizations at the level that the Community Services Committee recommended will provide the city with the results that they were looking for in these RFP to directly support undocumented individuals and families in the city. We are grateful to the city for taking this step to provide direct funding for the undocumented community, and we hope that in the future, the city, the county, and the state will continue to create this type of funding to support undocumented communities at a larger scale. So again, we are recommender and supporting the substitute resolution by the Community Services Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rachel Deutering of District eighteen, to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Rachel, you are unmuted on our end. We cannot hear you, though. Do you have a mute on your mic? Okay, I guess we'll come back to Rachel.
Okay, uh, so then Tyson Vitale of District fourteen, to be followed by Armando Ibarra.
Tyson was here a minute ago, um, but is no longer here.
Alright, then Armando Ibarra of Pittsburgh, to be followed by, uh, Marcio Sierra Junior.
Good evening. Buenas tardes, Mayor and Alders. Um, first and foremost, I wanna commend the city for its decision um to designate um ARPA money for services to undocumented immigrants. Um, and, you know, I just wanna read the RFP so that we're all on the same page here. The RFP states, "The city of Madison is seeking to fund proposals in twenty twenty-two that support community partners in their work delivering direct assistance to undocumented individuals and families as they cope with the consequences of the COVID-nineteen pandemic." It does not say this is designated mu- money or resources for unauthorized immigrants, and these are the most vulnerable of our immigrant population and our, and our neighbors. Um, this is a legal status, or in, a, a legal status where these folks are subject to criminal and ci- criminal and civil charges and can face deportation because of this immigration status. It is not for folks, for example, that have deferred action for childhood arrivals. It is not for legal immigrants or, or long-permanent residents. It is not for services for natural citizens. It is not for immigrants on short-term visas, and it's not for people that hold the refugee status. It explicitly states it's for unauthorized or undocumented immigrants, which unfortunately, at this moment, happens to be the majority from Latin American countries, seventy to eighty percent. For this reason, I oppose the alternate resolution with staff recommendations. I strongly support the substitute with Community Services Committee Recommendation. I believe the substitute does a, a better job at addressing the real needs and the material needs of the vast majority of this undocumented uh population in Madison. I also want to state that I was present at the, at, I was present at the Community Service Committee a few days ago, and I was in shock that, at the way that process had been violated um in making the staff recommendations. In order to maintain and build additional trust with organizations, we must maintain an open and honest process. Process matters. We've also heard testimonials and anecdotes about the undocumented population and its diversity, but we have verified data that tells us that this population is vastly made up of people from Latin American countries here in Madison and across the country. You know, pitting agencies
And that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Marcio Sierra Junior of District thirteen, to be followed by Alondra Ketchol.
Thank you, Mayor and Common Council. My name is Marcio Sierra, and I am an immigrant who has been a resident of Madison since nineteen ninety-three. When I came to Madison in nineteen ninety-three, I did not speak any English. I only spoke Spanish. My community, my family away from home, became the immigrant community, most of them Spanish-speaking and many of them undocumented. Since then, I have been part of the immigrant community, and I have been serving the immigrant community, many of them undocumented, for over half of my life. I am the pastor and president of Lighthouse Church and School. The church has a membership of over a hundred families, many of them undocumented. Lighthouse School serves over three hundred children, sixty percent are Hispanic and many undocumented. We have a food pantry that serves about a hundred families weekly. Ninety percent of the families are Hispanic, many of them undocumented. In twenty twenty, Lighthouse raised close to half a million dollars to help families affected by the pandemic. We received over a thousand applications in less than a month for help with rent, utilities, and others. About six hundred of those were undocumented families that applied. I say all of this to make a point that I know the immigrant community in Madison and who are the organizations that work closely with them, and I know that by far, the undocumented community in Madison and the surrounding area is Hispanic, over seventy percent. This is why I oppose Agenda Item Fifty-three, Alternate Resolution with Staff Recommendation. And I am in support of the substitute resolution, Community Service Committee Recommendations. I know and have worked with the organizations that have been recommended by the Community Service Committee, and I am a witness of the extensive work that they have done with the undocumented community. I applaud their efforts, and I constantly hear testimonies of the great work that they do in our community, especially with undocumented families. This funding is a one-time funding, and it is my hope that in your efforts, efforts of being inclusive and fight for equity, which I applaud, that you will not miss out on the reason why these funds have been made available and that you will allocate these funds to organizations that will do the work of supporting undocumented families, organizations that have already been doing this work and will have the greatest impact. I opposed Item Fifty-three, Alternate Resolution with Staff Recommendations because it leaves out organizations that are doing the work that these funds have been allocated for. Leaving organizations like the, like the Latino Warfolks Development and Silk, or Community Immigration Law Center, out of this funding makes nonsense whatsoever and causes me to think and assume that there are other motives on how these funds are being distributed and not based on the real need that is out there to help undocumented community. I ask that you make the right decision and vote in support of the substitute resolution, Community Service Committee Recommendations. Thank you for all the work that you do and for listening to a concerned resident of your community. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Our next registrant is, uh, Alondra Ketchol of Middleton, to be followed by Brenda Gonzalez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Common Council, for your time, for allowing me to speak. Um, I'm here to say, I'm here representing not just myself, but my own community, my undocumented community. I am in a position for what is right now set, and I recommend you all to take seriously and to reconsider our community recommendations for the undocumented community. I want to start by stating that the stimulus checks, at first, were a relief, but I want you to highlight and emphasize, who were they for? How much more can we also How much more can we also continue to take the suppression that my undocumented community keeps taking? We've already been suppressed for many, many years, since nineteen eighty-three. Centro Hispano has been there, has, you know, been in full support for the Cuban refugees. Since that year, the undocumented community, the immigrant community, has continued to look at places like Centro. They continue to look at other places like the Latino Academy, Veracor, RISE, CMC, the Rainbow Project, and all the ones that we have listed here. Right? And so I ask, how much can we be suppressed? We've already been suppressed mentally, physically, economically, again, after this pandemic? People keep working two, three jobs. People can't go to one place or another, can't go to the north side, can't go to the south side, east side because of transportation issues. Let me emphasize that this state does not allow the undocumented community to get a driver's license. So how are they supposed to go from one side to the other side? They cannot buy simple supplies because they need, if they pay with a check, they need a driver's license. Right? And it's invalid. Why? Because it's expired because of that time that people can't since ever get a driver's license. They can't apply for their students to get support in getting a higher education because they're undocumented, because their parents are undocumented. Places like Centro have built comfort. Places like Veracor has helped people make that switch. Places like the Latino Academy has helped people rise up and get a better job, has helped their families. Places like Centro has helped people to get the vaccine. Putting these funds aside doesn't make sense. So I ask for you to not only think about what you learned, if you did learn in your ethnic studies classes, that this is not about equality. It's about equity, modern, more current things that we face, to remember what happened during those two years that you saw in the news, that you heard from people, that you heard from your neighbors while you were in this pandemic, that we continue to still see in this pandemic, undocumented community. I yield my time back.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brenda Gonzalez of District Nineteen to be followed by Kevin Foley.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak again about this. Thank you for your work, Alders and Mayor Satya, and the community present here. I really appreciate the time and your work. I'm so sorry the system continues to put us against each other. This is very difficult to think once again. I'm often here and everywhere that I can influence to support BIPOC and other and all underrepresented community efforts to create a better and equitable community for all. By far, the undocumented community is Latinx. Seventy to eighty percent of undocumented people are Latinx. My name is Brenda Gonzalez, and I represent myself today, myself, my friends, and my family. I oppose the Alternate Resolution with Staff Recommendations and strongly support the Community Services Committee Substitute Recommendations. This is about centering the community most impacted, which is without a doubt, unfortunately, the Latinx undocumented community. I hope that you can hear clearly that this is not against any other community. We all need, with the resources that we have in this city, support each other and all underrepresented communities. I know we can. This time, for once, please think about the underrepresented community that is the undocumented community, which is the ones that build your houses, that clean your house, that take care of your family and kids, that do many things that I know that you know, that that is a group that needs the most support. That obviously, you don't hear the voices directly, but I can tell you, I have right here in my family and my friends those voices that I hope that I can be honest and bring to you directly. So please support Centro, Hispano, Latino Academy, Veracor, Silk, RISE Wisconsin, the Multicultural Center, Rainbow Project, and African Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kevin Foley of Manona to be followed by Alex Isquierdo.
Amir, I believe Brenda was the last person that was wishing to speak.
You're absolutely right. My apologies. I was just going down the list. So let's circle back and see if we have any of the folks. We skipped Kazwa Vaj, Jessica Williams.
Kazwa is here.
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Kazwa.
Okay, so it is so unfortunate that the definition of undocumented is so limited. No offense to anybody, but I think that the conversation of undocumented immigrants in this country needs to broaden to include other ethnic minority, specifically Southeast Asians or Asian Americans or Asian people. I think that if you think about undocumented in the way that, I don't know who was speaking before. When you're undocumented, it doesn't matter how you came to this country to become undocumented. That journey, no matter what journey took you here, is equally important. The fact that I have family members who cannot get the same, no matter how they became undocumented, cannot get the resources that they need during COVID time is equally as important as somebody who came here on undocumented documents. So I'm really surprised by that definition. This is by no means to say that the Latinx community isn't suffering from COVID or the undocumented folks. But there has to be a different conversation about immigration and documentation. This is very little money. I think everybody should get some. But seventy-five thousand dollars to Freedom Aim to Serve the Southeast Asian Community? Which other organizations that's listed by that recommendation will serve seventy-five families? If you break it down, and one thousand dollar goes to one family so that they can stay in their housing for one more month? Who has the, who of the listed organizations can provide that within a month? Can you make sure that they reach out to those families within a month? None of them. So this is why the equity and equality and that conversation is just, I don't understand that conversation. You all know equity isn't about equality, isn't about equal. And so, yes, if you looked at it as if equal, and these numbers, eighty percent or ninety percent are Latinx, therefore, this, all of it should go to Latinx communities for the majority of them. That's fine. But what about this population? I've been here since nineteen eighty. I am also part of this community. I'm so tired of people like not seeing the Southeast Asian community as a community that also needs help. And so, yes, I support Centro getting all that Centro needs. I support all of the other organizations, but to continuously talk about immigration this way is so disheartening and it's divisive. And so I just wanna say, like, it's seventy-five thousand dollars to Freedom Aim to serve a population that nobody else is serving. So just like service providers out here are undocumented, when you go get your nails done, many of those people who are serving you that are Southeast Asian are undocumented. When you're, our people are also working and service-oriented.
And that's time.
Thank you. Let's try for Jessica Williams.
Still no Jessica.
And how about Veronica Vega?
Yeah, I think Veronica still had time here. Oops, sorry, Veronica. If you could unmute again. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Again.
Thanks for trying again, Veronica. You've got about two minutes left.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity, actually, because we don't have every day to say what we wanna say. And it is unfortunately, like, I would wanna say this again, it is unfortunately that we are doing this, you know? We already doing these services in our community center. We don't need to look for any families who need this money. Our families, our community comes to our center, they need this money. So we've been doing this job for several years. And we know what to be undocumented. It's very hard. And we are. Because our community.
Veronica, you're breaking up on us a lot, Veronica. I don't know if it's a connection issue on your end.
Can you hear me?
We can. We can hear you, but you're breaking up a lot.
Okay, I'm very sorry. I think I will end that here. And I, please, please pardon me. Thank you for reconsidering.
Thank you. Let's try for Zoraida Salcedo.
I do not see that name in the list.
Or Rachel Duttering? Or Tyson Vitale?
Rachel, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I left the meeting and then came back. So I'm glad. Thank you for coming back to me. So good evening, everyone. I'm Rachel. I'm the Community School Resource Coordinator at Lakeview Community School. We're a public elementary school on the north side of Madison. And I was a part of the group of people who contributed to the Northside Collaborators Proposal. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of allocating funding to the Northside Collaborators Proposal, which was included in the staff recommendations and the Finance Committee Recommendations. The Northside Collaborators are a network of about twenty organizations that includes schools, neighborhood centers, and nonprofits on the north side of Madison who work together closely to serve a diverse community, including our undocumented immigrants. If awarded this funding, we will work with dozens of partners who have longstanding trust-based relationships with our undocumented residents. And we can promptly support them in accessing these funds, which will be a hand up to these resilient folks as they continue to navigate the lingering impacts of the pandemic. I also want to highlight the diversity of our immigrant population on the north side of Madison. We have folks from all over the world, including Central and South America, West Africa, the Middle East and Southeast Asia, that represent the diversity of the undocumented community in the whole of Madison. The Northside Collaborators Proposal is a simple yet powerful proposal. And the funding in it would be, funding it would be an investment in the undocumented community, which we know has barriers to accessing resources even in the best of times. And it will also be an investment in the north side of Madison, which is often overlooked when it comes to opportunities like this. These funds will go, will promptly go directly to those most in need. We will disperse this aid quickly and efficiently to undocumented immigrants through a streamlined, human-centered request process that preserves the dignity of the people requesting assistance and empowers folks in crisis to make the best choices for themselves and their families so that they can meet their emergent basic needs. Keeping, so keeping this context in mind, our process for requesting aid will be as straightforward as possible. We'll ask folks to self-identify, complete a brief form detailing their situation, and then we'll let them select the type of aid that we know will be most useful to them. So that could be an energy bill, possibly car repairs, gift cards for gas, groceries, or retail, or other types of basic need assistance. We wanted to make our aid to this community as similar as possible to the COVID relief and tax credits that these residents may have missed out on because they're undocumented. I would also like to note that our proposal is designed to maximize the direct financial aid to undocumented immigrants. We've included a very minimal fiscal agency fee to cover overhead costs of processing these requests, but the vast majority of funds we will see will go directly to undocumented residents in a very quick fashion. Our network of northside providers is well-positioned to spread the word about these funds and connect folks of these resources quickly, simply, and in a culturally and linguistically relevant way.
And that's time.
We are eager. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, how about Tyson Vitale?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak today. And I really wanna especially thank all the prior folks who have spoken. And I wanna begin by saying that I only read this agenda item, and I've learned a lot from this conversation and others today regarding the specifics of the alternate and the organizations that are being selected. And I wanna first preface that I'm really unlimited in information, like I'm sure a lot of you are. And most importantly, from a place of privilege, as having never been someone undocumented, let alone an immigrant. So I wanna preface with saying that, in general, we need more funding for undocumented community, period. And education ourselves to better serve the segment of our community that is obviously not getting the support it needs. And today, y'all need to decide, or the council needs to decide, how to move forward with the limited funds that we do have to move forward doing that. From what I understand, I do understand the general logic of a better, more tight RFP process and all the recommendations put forward. And I have trust, I have trust in the Alders that the intent and the work was well-meaning from everyone that has supported everything that has been put forward. I also have to say that I really also, it's hard for me, I really trust the people who have spoken in support of the, both the recommendations for the alternate, but then also have supported the community recommendations for the substitute. And I will say also that a lot of people that I have spoken with, that I've heard speak. Sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. I have had personal experience with and have really stepped up in people that I love lives really deeply, that have had problems with their citizenship. So I hope that you guys can listen to everyone who has spoken today and really make a thoughtful decision and trust the people, especially, and really listen to people who are on the ground and also who work daily in providing services to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all of our registrants that are wishing to speak and are here. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Abbas.
Thank you very much. Can I have a question for Shiva Bedaw?
Is Shiva still with us?
I am.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Shiva, for being here. Unfortunately, Community Development Meeting was not recorded. So I got information by talking to various Alders of the staff. Could you please just recap how your committee came across this to see on a substitute?
So thank you, Alder Abbas, for that question. So the committee listened to much testimony, much of it that you have really sent to today from people working underground. The committee also happens to have myself, who without any doubt can tell you has worked twenty-five years of my life, day in and day out, working directly with undocumented individuals, and really understands very well what services are available and unfortunately are not available for our undocumented population and who they are, as well as a joining forces for families social worker who also spends much of her time doing this work. So we discussed how, two things. One, we discussed process and process integrity and how we needed to make sure that we maintain that process integrity by maintaining the deadline that was given by the RFP and therefore not, as you heard from other testimony, not making exceptions regardless of what that exception can mean or not, because it's really important to have that integrity. I wanna go on record to say that other organizations also submitted late and were not considered. Then we discussed the organizations that really provide services on the ground and have a proven record of doing that during COVID, specifically, again, reminder that this is ARPA funding that comes to us due to the impact of COVID. And so Centro Hispano, and Latino Workforce Development, Catholic Multicultural Center, the African Center, and Silk, RISE Wisconsin, and Rainbow Word Organization that we discuss as organization that really provide both services directly to the most impacted community, as you heard by just facts and numbers, as the Latinx community, but also a number of organizations that specifically serve other communities, like the African community, and including four organizations that you have before you with the recommendation of CSC that serve all communities, all undocumented. And those would be um Silk, Catholic Multicultural Center, Rise Wisconsin, Baracote, and Bridge Lake Point, which are part of the same application. So um we felt that the recommendation really centered both most impacted and also making sure that the um all communities who are undocumented um will have access to this limited funding um at this time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Can I have a question for Karen? Karen Koller?
You still have Karen with us?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, Karen, thanks for being here. Uh.
Thank you, Alder Abbas.
Yes, it's very painful to, uh emotionally painful to hear public testimony on this particular issue. Uh, during your public comment, you mentioned about the RFP process was a mistake. I'm curious, as this body of council, it's important for us to collect feedback on our RFPs and the process we conduct as a city. I'm curious why you said that and if you have suggestions or feedback around it.
You know, I think taking care of a undocumented community is a civil rights issue for the city. Um, I think the percentages have proven that we are a vibrant part of this community. And when this is put out for an RFP, it just shifts all the responsibility on the community. Rather than saying, these are emergency funds, these are ARPA funds, let's create a strategy together that's driven by the city so that we can support the community. Unfortunately, with my experience during COVID, um what we have seen is that in most of the basic need spaces, the depth of services is just not there. And we've all scrambled to try to figure out a way so that our undocumented community, the Latinx community in particular, does not fall through the cracks. So for me, the RFP, the bidding process doesn't work when we don't have a plan that we're all supporting. And that's the part that makes it most painful, because this is for recovery, but we don't have a plan for recovery for our community. So when an RFP gets put put out there and we don't have a plan, I'm not sure what we're all doing. So we're trying the best that we can in the community to collaborate so that we can have the best results from these money. It's important to have impact, and that's a, that's a commitment that I make to the families that we see at Centro.
Thank you very much, Karen. Really appreciate that. Uh, can I have a last question for Rachel? That Deterding? Sorry if I'm butchering your last name.
Is Rachel still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Alder.
Yes, Rachel. Thank, thank you for being here. During your public comments, you mentioned about uh twenty collaborators on the north side serving uh BIPOC community, also South Asian community. Um, I'm curious if if you also work with Freedom Inc. and serve MONG community as a part of that uh South Asian community.
Um, yeah, that's a great question, and thank you for that question. Um, so the Freedom Inc. is not specifically a part of our Northside Collaborators Group. Um, we're really like a network of of collaborators. They're working on the geographic north side of Madison, um like providing services. And I know, I mean, Freedom Inc. works across the city. Um, so they're not a part of our Northside Collaborators Group, but um you know, among our collaborators, we do have um like a large MONG population on the north side of Madison, particularly connected with our schools. Lakeview has a MONG bilingual program. Um, I, almost twenty-five percent of our school identifies as MONG. Um, so certainly, we have some reach in that community. I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. Sounds to my question. I I appreciate that, Rachel. No more further question, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry, questions for registrants?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Is Kazua back still with us?
Kazua?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Alder.
Hi, Ka- hi, Kazua.
Hi.
I know you weren't able to share, as many other speakers, everything you had to share. So I wanted to ask if you could speak to um I the application that Freedom Inc. submitted and any um why it was late?
So, our longtime grant administrator uh left, and that was her last week. And she normally submits all of our grants, and she thought the deadline was a four P M. deadline. And right after, um, I think quickly when she realized, and she was trying to turn it in, she realized that it was noon. And so she called the city staff right away, and they had mentioned to her that it had passed. So that's why um that proposal was sent in.
Thank you. I have one more question. Um, can you speak to the specific um issues that you and your staff are seeing at Freedom Inc. with the Southeast population you serve? Um, specifically in respects to safety and considering undocumented uh definition as it was posed in this RFP?
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, I think that for people who don't understand, uh, you know, there's a lot of ways that Southeast Asians. When I say Southeast Asians, I'm talking about um Vietnamese, Cambodians, Laotian, MONG. And they, they are a particular population in the city in that they have a political um shared history of how we came to this country as refugees. Many of the people who don't work with Southeast Asians may not understand how they become undocumented or if they're undocumented. Many of them have come here to um, may have come to this country to unify, to have family reunification, because as refugees, we were settled in different countries and might have different statuses that does not permit them to to become citizens or to become uh eligible for um permanent residency. Many of them are trafficked here. Uh, as you know, there's trafficking, sex trafficking, but there's also labor trafficking. There's many of them who come here on fiance visas. However they get here, they become undocumented here. And so those are the populations that we also serve. And the particular population that we served, um which makes them even more um underserved, are populations that have um are victims and and survivors of domestic and uh and gender-based violence, which means that they're not just gonna go to Northside Planning Council to get help. There is a very particular type of help. They're not, in addition to to surviving COVID, they're also surviving domestic violence and sexual assault in their households. These are the very particular um uh families that we serve. In addition to that, I know that African development um was also considered uh for funding under this proposal. The African women that we do see are victims of gender-based violence. They may not go to go, they may not go to typical agencies to seek services. And so we do provide a very particular uh service to a very particular population. And so I just wanted people to know that there's different ways that Southeast Asians uh uh come to this country, become undocumented. There are undocumented students, Asian-American students who live in the city, or not Asian-American, but Asian students who live in the city, who are undocumented, who come and we've helped them not only survive COVID, but survive domestic violence and sexual assault in their household. And so that's why it's really particular. It's it's a population that uh Centro probably does not serve. You know, Karen and I, we love each other, and I support uh Centro getting what they need. I just know that this population that we serve, uh none of these agencies that are on uh the list of being uh awarded uh funds serve this population in the way that we serve them.
Thank you, Kazua.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions for registrants?
Yes, is Steve Maurice or uh Laura Green available?
If Steve or Laura?
Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead, Alder.
Steve, um, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, I believe that prior to CMC, that location was called the St. Martin House. And they worked with undocumented um residents. Can you give us a history, and I need it too, of CMC? And their work, and how does, okay, I'll, I'll let you answer that first. I'm sorry.
Sure. Yeah, actually, I mean, as a name, the CMC has been around since two thousand two, but the organizations that preceded it um were actually founded back in nineteen forty-six. And Centro Guadalupano was founded in the mid-seventies. And so, and even before Centro Guadalupano was founded, um the St. Martin House was working with the incoming Latino community at that time and providing services at that time too. So yes, um, as an organization, we have been serving the Latino community and um the community in general for a very long time.
Alder, you're muted.
Okay, I'm ready. Um, can you tell me that I think that in the substitute um the allow, funding allotment is fifty thousand? And what can you do with that? Because that is half of what the recommendation from staff was. I just want to, if you can answer that question.
Sure. I mean, yeah, obviously fifty percent of the original, I mean, the original request, as most organizations asked for the hundred and fifty thousand. So fifty thousand would be half of the staff recommendation, and it would, obviously, we would have, we would serve much fewer people um in be able to provide the financial assistance um that we could with a hundred thousand. And as was pointed out before, you know, obviously, some agencies are serving um some of the same families, but often, you know, families feel comfortable with one agency or another. And so they may come to the CMC, they may come to Centro too, maybe not, you know, it it depends. But if the money is spread more evenly across agencies, it actually provides more funding for the families, because if they are served by multiple agencies, they can get access to funds for different things from different, for different agencies. So actually, in the end, many families would be served better by the funds being spread more evenly.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Alboras, questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask questions of Dr. Ibarro.
Should we have Dr. Ibarro with us still?
Armando, please, but I am here.
Thanks, Armando. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Armando. Um, first off, thank you for being here and uh public comment. I have a, I believe it's a three-fold question, but um at first, for for the edification of this body, would like for you to speak about your background in academia and your expertise um that you bring to the perspective that you're speaking from. And then secondly, would like for you to speak, um, I feel like you were trying to get to this in your public comment, but like uh the definition and the characteristics of what undocumented means, and um from your vantage point, um, you know, what populations are sort of majority represented in that, in that space. And then, thirdly, um, you know, I know that you have a lot of experience and background as it pertains to uh worker rights. And um, you know, in the, in the, the height, in the beginning of the pandemic, um, you had some very interesting uh information to share with folks within our city about um how, you know, undocumented Latino immigrants were really heavily impacted via COVID transmission and how that had, you know, health outcomes for their families. So if you could just speak to those three things, and if you need me to repeat any of that, let me know. Um, but I would like to hear from your perspective um regarding those questions.
Thank you, Alder, for for these questions, and they are multi-layered. And uh usually would take me uh several weeks to get through just one of the questions with regards to readings and assignments and and um really looking into the the data. Um, the fir-, the, let me, let me uh, let's, let me speak first directly to to your last question with regards to um essential workers during the pandemic. And let me be clear, um, the undocumented um laborer in Madison, in Wisconsin, and across the country has always been essential to the, to both the economic and social well-being of our communities. Um, unfortunately, you know, some of the most exploited workers that we have in Madison are those that are undocumented and exploitable for that very reason. Um, you know, in the, we, at the, at the start of the pandemic, let me, let me also preface by saying that I am one of the co-founders of what's called the Essential Workers Rights Network, which is a network of of essential workers across the state with a large contingency here in Madison um that I've been working alongside Vozes de la Frontera. For those of you that do not know, it's, it's the largest um membership-run organization in the state of Wisconsin and seen as a leader in the, as a national leader in immigrate, immigration and labor rights um today. Um, so yeah, without, without these undocumented folks that have been laboring um during this pandemic, um, most of us wouldn't have been able to live the lives that we live. Um, basically, lives um that 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 are dependent on the very, on the very dexterity of of these workers that that are providing us our sustenance, that are providing us our comfort in our home, that are caring for those loved ones that 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 many of us have as well. Um, I can tell you that at the start of the pandemic, there were several outbreaks um in in plants in Dane County of essential workers, and these essential workers um were undocumented. And the vast majority of them, and let's be clear about this, the vast majority of them are from Latin American countries. Uh, we define them as Latinx because they are here, but if you ask them, they will tell you, I'm from Honduras. I am from Mexico. I am from El Salvador. I'm from Peru. Um, so there's that diversity within the Latinx community, which has a, with, which, within this, this community, there's also vast cultural differences, ethnic differences, language differences. It's not a monolithic uh community as it has been defined by some folks on here. It's a very complex community um that, you know, before I, before I started, um, is absolutely essential to the economic and social well-being of of Madison. Um, it's estimated that about two-thirds of all essential workers are undocumented workers at this point. These are studies that that have come um out during the pandemic by both advocacy organizations, but also by think tanks and scholars out there. Um, and it's also estimated that about twenty-five percent of all Latin American um immigrants are undocumented, making it by far the largest um, the largest subgroup within this immigration status uh designation. Um, and let's be clear, that's what we're talking about. It's an immigration status designation. And as somebody alluded to earlier, there's many ways that people can become undocumented in our country. Um, the largest number of undocumented folks are visa overstayers, people that come here on temporary visas, right? But also, uh, legal permanent residents can lose their documented status, their immigration documented status, by committing certain crimes or by giving it up, by not living in the country a continual amount of time. We have um, we have, we have immigration lawyers here, um especially, I'm thinking of Ayesha from Silk, that are much more well-versed in this law than I am. I am, I've been studying, um, I've been studying labor migration for the most part of my career. Um, I've got about twenty years in higher ed, eleven here in Madison, and I've published extensively on labor migration. I've published extensively on, on, um, on, on economics, and I've published extensively on the social, political aspects of labor migration from Mexico to the U.S. Um, and let me, and let's also be clear, these folks don't want to have this designation. Latinx undocumented immigrants don't want to be seventy-five or eighty percent of this subgroup population. But unfortunately, at this time in history, at this point in history, they are. Um, these folks didn't have the relief from, from uh, from recovery, you know, that most of us did. These folks are part of mixed-status families. Um, in Madison alone, let's just take MMSD, and if we use the eight percent um estimate of, of students, of students in public school having at least one parent who's undocumented, we're talking about twenty-seven hundred students in MMSD that have at least one undocumented parent. Right? So they're mixed-status families as well. So, and they're not just in, in, in a, in, in the city of Madison. They're connected to Pittsburgh, to Middleton, and to other cities in uh, in towns and rural areas. and to other cities in uh, in towns and rural areas in Dane County. It's an interconnected community. Um, as to, as to my, as to my, my professional, most of you know, I am a faculty member. I am a professor of, of, of working and labor studies. I am an expert in labor migration, and um, that's, this is what I do.
Thank you, Armando. Madam Mayor, I don't have any more questions right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Boris. Uh, Alder Bennett, you're next in line. Question for attendees?
Uh, I have a question for um, Cabzua. I hope I pronounced your name right. Please cor- correct me.
Casua.
Casua, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so I'm wondering, from your comments, I, I, I can totally understand how it's frustrating to kind of be dismissed almost, as if like, we need to recognize that like, not all undocumented people in our city are Latin pe- um, Latin, in the Latinate community. So um, what I'm wondering for you is, you, you talked about how you have a relationship with people in Central. Like, what is hindering, or if anything, stopping Freedom Inc. from collaborating with Central in like, filling this gap in, in like, um, working together to uh, serve both communities?
You can't. I mean, there's language barriers, there's cultural barriers, there's access to community, there's trust. People are not gonna, I mean, you know, it's just like Central, uh, Latinx people wouldn't come to Freedom Inc. for services. Freedom Inc., Southeast Asian folks wouldn't go to Central for, for services. It's not because we're not good people, it's because you have trust in the community. I've been in this community since nineteen eighty. I grew up here. People know me, people know the organization. There's a language barrier, there's a cultural barrier. People go to places where they feel people can serve them. And so it's not, if we can't collaborate, yes, we can probably collaborate, but like I said, the last, last year, I think there was a very similar funding that came through. Um, it was about eighty thousand dollars that went to Freedom Inc. Within a month, we were able to give this funding out to families who desperately needed it because of COVID. And so it isn't that we can't collaborate, but it is also that it's, it, there's cultural barriers. There's language barriers, there's access barriers. And so I think that, yeah, just like, that question should be raised to me, like, I think Central, we'll probably answer in the same way. So it's not the fact that any of these other organizations uh, couldn't collaborate with us. It's, it's, first of all, the amount of money is too little to, for collaboration. And it shouldn't be going to organizations for anything else. This is funding that should be going to families. I'm very, very clear about what's gonna happen with this money. It is not a lot of money, and people are suffering from COVID. And people need this funding to stay in their, their homes, to, to feed their children, to, to keep the internet on so that their children can have access to education, to get their workers permit, to, to basic, I mean, I, I know what this funding is gonna go to. It's not gonna stay in the agency.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Uh, Madam Mayor is back.
Thank you, President Abbas, um, and thanks for allowing me a minute to step away. Um, are there any further questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none. Um, I don't believe, but let me just double-check that we have any more speakers on any items. Um, so we will go back up to our public hearing items and then work our way through um, the rest of the exclusions from the consent agenda. So on uh, item number three, which just to remind you is Legis 69137, uh, new license for the international, President Abbas, a motion, please?
Move motion to grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing none, that item is granted. Yeah, and then item four is Legis 69577, a new license for Ohms Liquor and More. And the motion here is to re-refer, President Abbas?
Move motion to re-refer to ALRC.
Second.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is re-referred. Number five is Legis 69583, a license transfer for Koi Sushi, uh, transferring locations, President Abbas?
Move motion to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is granted with conditions. That's the end of our public hearings, so uh, we will move on to item forty. Right. Item forty is Legis 70055, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to specify the hiring and supervision of common council office staff. On item forty, President Abbas, a motion, please?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Uh, item forty, let's start with, uh, any questions for staff? Alder Foster?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering if Attorney Haas could just uh, highlight what the proposed changes would do um, as compared to the current ordinance?
Attorney Haas?
Sure, thank you. The um, or, the main, the main uh, I guess, objective of the ordinance is to clarify that the common council chief of staff is the only position in the common council office that is appointed by the council, and that other staff of that office are appointed and supervised by the chief of staff. Um, we, we, the, the ordinance moves a little bit of language around. It adds a um, uh, adds a provision that the chief of staff is supervised by the council president and make, will make monthly reports to the common council executive committee. Um, so that, that's the ordinance. Um, I believe that Alder Carter has an amendment to clarify some language that we, we overlooked. Um, and that amendment, if I could, just to explain it, would um, clarify that uh, the duties, it, it would essentially clarify language in subse- subsection two A of section thirty-three thirteen, um, where we forgot to put in a period and add a couple of words. So we just clarify that the, the staff of the common council office will continue to have the same duties that it has now. Um, and it's only the chief of staff uh, hiring that is accepted from the uh, regular rules for the rest of the office.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to sort of clarify, so I, I think the, the first change is clear into a, about um, basically moving other council staff to not be appointed by, by council. Um, but the change in, into B, uh, you kind of mentioned it briefly, but I think it's, um, it, it took me a while to kind of see it, and I'm not sure it's clear for folks yet. So the, the current language says that the, um, the, the chief of staff um, reports to the common council executive committee. And the proposed change says instead, the common, the, the chief of staff is supervised by the council president and makes monthly reports to the common council executive committee. So I just want to clarify my understanding. This, so this really sort of moves a, a fairly significant shift in a reporting relationship that's in there today, from, of the, the chief of staff to the com- common council executive committee, and instead shifts that to now supervision by the council president. And what used to be a reporting relationship to CCEC is now changed to um, submitting a monthly re-
Get down! Sorry.
I assume that wasn't for me.
Well, assume Alder, uh, Carter was speaking to her animals.
So Attorney Haas, I don't, I, I guess I want to make sure I'm clear about that, and I want to make sure everybody else is, is clear about that. Because that, to me, uh, tho- those are sort of two significant changes. One of them, I'm, I'm supportive of, the first one. I'm, I'm concerned about the second one, but I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly and that everybody else has the same understanding if we're gonna be considering this.
Sure, the, you're correct, um, Alder, that there's a change uh, to insert language that the chief of staff shall be supervised by the council president, which is not the current language. Um, and makes monthly reports to CCEC. Um, previously, the, the language stated that the chief of staff uh, reports to CCEC. Um, the current language, which would, would remain unchanged, also says that uh, the chief of staff is subject to the authority of CCEC to impose discipline or discharge um, as provided in the, in the personnel rule. So um, uh, you know, Alder Carter could speak to this, but you have supervision by the president making monthly reports to CCEC, and any discipline being imposed by CCEC. Uh, to me, uh, I, I guess I would read that as the council president having the sort of day-to-day supervision of the chief of staff. Um, but any, uh, any discipline has to be imposed by CCEC. And then there's the requirement to make monthly reports um, to, to that committee as well.
Thank you. And one follow-up question, and maybe it's actually a better question for um, for, for Harper. Um, I don't know if he's, yeah, it looks like, um, the, the, so currently, the chief of staff is appointed by, hired by the full common council and reports to CCEC, including um, as needed for discipline um, or discharge. So if, and if those things re, well, at least the discipline and discharge remains, the, the reporting too sort of disappears, and then we insert the supervision by council president. What, what is that, what does that mean? So if the, if the council hires, essentially, CCEC would fire or discipline, um, and then I, and then I, it also says members of the common council get to assign duties, what is at, what is the supervision responsibilities of the council president?
So, um, thank you. So I believe what we're, what you're really trying to do is just clarify. So it's hard to be supervised by twenty folks, um, even CCEC, so you're going to want to take that direct, um, or take direction from one individual. So I believe that's the intention when the council president was identified in that role.
Okay, so you, so supervision would be taking direction from, correct? Okay. Um, and I think my only other question is, um, the, the with the new, with the proposed changes into a, it says that the um, chief of staff appoints the other staff in the council office rather than hire? Feel like we won't, we haven't used that word normally. Is there any, and maybe this is back to Attorney Haas, is that, is that the right terminology for hiring somebody in civil service, an appointment?
Actually, Haas, do you mind if I take that one?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, it probably would be better to use the word hire. Um, comparable to other department division heads, um, they are, he would, he or she would serve as that hiring authority. And I think that this is removing the need for approval from the full-body council to make a selection.
Those are my, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Carter, questions for staff? Now you do need to unmute, Alder.
I, I know I missed something because my dog has gone insane. There's a rabbit in the backyard. I'm gonna have to go out and shooch the rabbit because I can't shut up the dog. Did you ask me a question? And, and I just want to say, Alder Foster, you don't have to get down. It was Teddy two that needed to get down.
Although you had your hand up, did you have questions for staff?
Oh, Lord, I, no, I'm gonna listen and circle back to me.
All right, thanks, Alder.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, then we're in discussion. The motion is to adopt. Alder Foster?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move uh, um, substitute motion of referral to the, excuse me, the May tenth, uh, CCEC on common council meetings.
Uh, right, so the motion is a substitute, which is referral to the May tenth uh, CCEC and council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Alder Furman will second, thank you. But Alder Foster, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so um, when, when I, when this was first introduced and I saw it, my uh, immediate reaction was, oh, that's a good change to um, to, to sort of clarify and move other council staff to be hired by chief of staff and not be appointed by council. Um, I, I reached out to Alder Carter and shared that, that I, I thought that was, it was a good proposal. Um, I was a little bit concerned at the time since um, it's, it's amending the same section that um, that, that an ordinance that I had introduced was amending, and just kind of questioned procedurally how we would deal with both of these at the same meeting. Um, and so, you know, started working on how I could incorporate that proposal into um, the, the proposed ordinance that I had drafted. Um, as I started working on that, uh, I realized there's just, there, there, there's a number of things in this ordinance that um, I think really could stand some, some broader clarifications. Um, earlier tonight at, at CCEC, um, you know, I, I, I supported referring the ordinance that I had proposed out, um, the, the referral ended up being to the May uh, tenth meeting. I asked for and suggested that this one go along with it, since they're in the same section and that we could um, sort of take our time and work on an update that would be, that would include um, kind of some of these multiple things. The, the part that I really object to is this, is really the second half. Um, and what I think is a, a, a pretty significant change and one that I think can will, will cause some more confusion in the future. Um, I think there's some really important conversations that we need to have around this question of reporting relationship, uh, supervision of the chief of staff. You know, this is a very unique situation and a real challenging one, to be honest. I mean, I was on CCEC uh, back when we had our, our first chief of staff, and we identified then that there's actually nothing in place, even with the current ordinance, that says CCEC is responsible. There were no processes, policies, anything in place to actually do that work. And I think it was a big contributor to some of the challenges that we had. Um, that was something that that CCEC back in twenty nineteen identified as a priority issue. And uh, over the course of that time, n- nothing has happened with it. I was part of the, the chief of staff, uh, position description, the president's work group that came together and, and proposed an update to that, um, that position description to get it posted for this hire that's underway right now. And one of the recommendations we had is that CCEC needs to develop that. Because we're gonna bring somebody on again, and we have no process in place for uh, for, for that question of supervision. Because there's, because it's very ambiguous right now, I think there's real, um, there's potential for misunderstanding and uh, and, and confusion around, around that relationship, and, and about what the role is for the council president, what the role is for CCEC, what the role is for the full council, what the role is for the chief of staff. I'm really concerned that if we adopted this right now, we're actually adding to that confusion. And instead, I think we should take our time, give ourselves another And instead, I think we should take our time, give ourselves another month, work on this and come back with something that actually would provide more clarity rather than adding to the confusion. I also suggested at the CCEC meeting tonight that as, as part of my review of this, I looked at the more recently created Office of the Independent Monitor ordinance, which I find really well-written, was clearly constructed, that actually delineates pretty clearly a very similar situation where a board is responsible for hiring and supervision of a, of an employee. And I think it could be a real great model for us to rewrite this section of the ordinances and actually provide some clarity. So at the end of the day, the recommendation tonight from CCEC was to actually move forward and adopt this. I do not think that this is ready for adoption. I think it simply adds to some confusion that needs to get clarified. So I would ask for support to refer this out to May so that we can take that time, deliberate on it, and actually make a change that, that makes sense and that clarifies these important questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. On the motion of referral, Alder Carter?
I am not in support of referral. It is in the ordinance that in the absence of the President of the Council is the supervisor of the Common Council Office that has already been established. The CCE doesn't preclude CCEC being a part of this. Quite frankly, any disciplinary action on the Chief of Staff needs to come to the CCEC. What if we have a president that goes rogue? Like, that hasn't happened in our time. But what if we have one? And fighters, the Chief of Staff. That's why the president, the president needs to come to CCEC to do that and have that approval to do that. So I think that it is fine. It can go forward. I hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck, on the question of referral?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too am in favor of referral. I agree with, with what Alder Foster had to say, but I also think that, you know, we're, we're getting ready to make a choice and hire a Chief of Staff. And I think that we should make sure we have our ducks in a row and make, make sure that we know exactly what this chain of command is going to be. And we don't want to burden a Chief of Staff with a confusing situation. And I think there is potential for confusion. And is, is, you know, it may be that some of us feel like there isn't, but I think there's enough doubt that it, there's no harm in waiting until May and working to see if we can eliminate some of that confusion. It'll make it easier as we hire a new Chief of Staff. So I recommend referral for the sake of, of who we hopefully will hire at the end of of the month, or is it the next month? Middle of the next month. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, on the question of referral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm on my cell phone because I was having problems with my laptop. I am not going to support the referral. And these are my reasons. Is that we will have a Chief of Staff that is in place. That Chief of Staff, when hired, would have the opportunity to work with the staff and to also contribute to the distinctions and hopefully that Chief of Staff will bring experiences and be able to contribute to that conversation. And I, my colleague mentioned the, the relationship for hiring the independent monitor. And that, that is a whole new conversation. We're looking at the Chief of Staff. We're looking at what operates and what works in the Chief of Staff's office and our staff office. One of the problems that I saw is that the Chief of Staff, even though they tried to work independently, it was a challenging position because some Alders do not allow that to happen. I am for hiring a Chief of Staff, letting that Chief of Staff know his, the staff that's already in the office and contribute to what that eventual change in ordinance will look like rather than us taking it on without that input from the newly hired Chief of Staff. So I'm not going to support that. And I'm not going to take that, that opportunity to, away from the recent, oh, not the recently, but the hired Chief of Staff. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, on the question of referral? No. Anyone else wishing to speak to the question of referral? All right, seeing none, anticipate a contested vote. So all those in favor of referral to the May 10th CCEC and Council meeting? Aye, those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice President Martin?
Sorry, just double checking. We are voting on Alder Foster's.
Wait, so it is on the referring?
The referring? Okay, just double checking, making sure. I vote aye. Thank you.
Alder Martin, aye. Alder Miazze?
No.
Alder Miazze, no. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vitter?
Aye.
Alder Vitter, aye. Alder Wajaya?
No.
Alder Wajaya, no. President Abbas?
No.
President Abbas, no. Alder Burus? I'm sorry, Alder Burus? Come back. Alder Benford?
Aye.
Alder Benford, aye. Alder Bennett?
I'm having a connection here. Issues here, sorry. No.
Alder Burus, no. I'm sorry, Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figueroa Cole, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Halverson?
No.
Alder Halverson, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Lemmer?
Aye.
Alder Lemmer, aye. So 13 ayes, 7 nos.
Thank you. With 13 ayes, the motion to refer passes. That item is referred to the May 10th CCEC and Common Council meetings. And we will go on to item 53, which is Legislar, Legistar 69987. The item authorizing allocation of up to 700,000 of ARPA funds to support community-based organizations serving undocumented immigrant residents. Remind you that what's, well, President Abbas, you'll make the motion and then I'll speak to it.
Sure. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move the substitute.
Alder, I think the appropriate thing would be to move the recommendation from Finance and then you can come back and make another motion?
Sure, we can do that either. All right. I would like to make a motion to move the alternative.
So the motion is to adopt the alternate due to the Finance Committee recommendation, and there's a second. And Alder, all right, let's, let's start with questions for staff. Alder Alboroz, is it a question?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion for the substitute.
Alder, let's see if there's any questions from your colleagues first, and then I'll come back to you. Alder Figueroa Cole, question for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, Yolanda, is available?
Yes. Go ahead, Alder.
Hi, Yolanda. I don't, can't find you on the screen, but can you please, I have a couple of questions for you. Can I, can we start by explaining to Council, what was the charge received? What was the, what exactly was it that, that the Council asked? And how do you interpret that, that request for this particular RFP?
Can you all hear me?
There you are.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yolanda Shelton Morris. I'm the Community Resources Manager in the Community Development Division. And I oversee that unit and the staff that implemented this funding process. So to answer your question, Alder Figueroa Cole, our charge as the division was to implement a funding process to allocate funding to community-based organizations in the City of Madison who provide services and support to our undocumented immigrant residents. A part of that, because these are ARPA funds and the federal requirement was that we allocate those funds using some type of funding process, RFP application process. In that process, kind of the first step was to really engage with community organizations to get a better understanding of what the key issues are facing these different groups in order to develop a focused application process to distribute the funds. We did that via, one, via a survey and two, via one-on-one conversations with agencies. We issued the survey back in October of 2021 to providers who have a history of working with the undocumented immigrant population. Again, to get a better understanding of what is the need and what type of services does this population need. From that process, we identified a total of, or spoke to a total of 15 providers. And based on that feedback and input from those organizations, there were a number of key challenges facing the Madison undocumented immigrant community that were identified. Some of those were food insecurity, legal assistance, workplace safety, housing, language barriers, transportation, navigating the healthcare system, and financial hardship. The greatest of those challenges was housing, financial hardships, and legal assistance. Those recommendations are what we use to help inform our application process. And we released an application, an application guidelines earlier this year in January. And in listening to the feedback from our partners, we really wanted to stress that these funds are intended to be flexible and are available to support programming and services to our undocumented immigrant residents. We did encourage agencies to, knowing that housing assistance was one of the top challenges that was identified, we did encourage agencies to direct individuals and families to the Dane Core Emergency Rental Assistance Program as immigration status is not a determinant of eligibility for federal assistance funds. But we do recognize that there are individuals and families who may face other barriers. And so, again, we really wanted to provide flexibility for these funds. And so one of the ways in which the funds could be used is to be able to provide direct financial assistance or cash transfers to individuals and families, giving them the flexibility to use the funds to see fit. So we again released the applications in early January. They were due towards the end of January. 19 proposals were submitted, of which 14 were initially considered based on criteria outlined in the application guidelines. However, it is important to note, and I think it was highlighted already this evening, that one proposal was reconsidered by staff. That proposal was from Freedom, Inc. And the purpose of that was, Freedom, Inc.'s application was the only application that identified serving predominantly Southeast Asian undocumented immigrant individuals and households. And so for staff, it was a decision to prioritize the people over the process to ensure that we were including our undocumented immigrant residents for funding. So in total, we reviewed a total of 15, or considered a total of 15 proposals requesting an aggregate a total of $2 million. Proposal budgets were between a minimum of $75,000 and a maximum of $150,000 as outlined in the application guidelines. Proposals were received by staff who took a number of variables into consideration when developing our funding recommendations, including application score, population served, connections to and record of supporting the specific population to be served, identification of relevant staff working with and supporting the population, process for allocating resources to the population, and the agency's proposed budget to ensure it is reasonable and the majority of the funds would be allocated to support the needs of the residents and households. Another important and key variable that factored into staff developing funding recommendations also included demographic data. Although there is very little data available to accurately describe the population of undocumented immigrants in the City of Madison, CDD staff did review data from the American Community Survey for the City of Madison. That's a five-year average with the most recent year being from 2019. What the data does not do is it does not separate undocumented residents from non-citizen residents. Rather, it is broken out by population, nativity, non-citizenship, and non-citizenship of low-income residents. Upon further analysis of the microdata, which contained only a few data points, staff decided to analyze a much larger sample of that census data. And when this larger sample was analyzed, staff found that non-citizens below the 200% of the federal poverty line are six times more likely to be Latinx than Asian and three times more likely to be Latinx than Black. And about 59% of all non-citizens in Madison who have household income less than 200% of the FPL are Hispanic and Latinx. 17% of all citizens, non-citizens in Madison who have household incomes less than 200 FPL are Black. 10% of all non-citizens in Madison who have household incomes less than 200 FPL are Asian. And the remaining is those of white, multiracial, and/or other race and ethnicity aside from Asian, Black, and Hispanic. So it's not perfect data, but it is the data that we used in our staff funding recommendations, which we presented to the Community Services Committee last week. That being said, I would like to just note that it's difficult to precisely compare the composition of the population we're trying to serve with the recommended allocation that we proposed to the Community Services Committee. One, because some, but not all of the organizations are proposing to serve multiple ethnic groups. For example, North Madison Collaborators, Rise, Wisconsin Incorporated, and the Vera Court Neighborhood Center, to be specific, as well as Freedom, Inc. are applications where they noted that they were going to serve more than one group. What we can say is that about nearly 60% of the funds in our staff recommendations were allocated to organizations serving solely Latinx households. Nearly 14% to those serving African, or 22% to those serving African households, and about 10% to those serving predominantly Asian households. The remaining percentage would go to organizations. The remaining percentage would go to organizations proposing to serve multiple groups. Um, we know, um, and we've heard it tonight, that, um, and the data tells us that the highest undocumented immigrant population in the city of Madison is Latinx. However, we also recognize that there are other groups, um, and we want to ensure funding is a, we wanted to ensure in our recommendations that funding was available to them as well. Um, so I will pause there and see if there are any other questions.
Thank you, Yolanda. There, there has been much said about the definition of undocumented. And, um, if we look at the, um, the council's orders in regard to this resolution, it wasn't, it wasn't really any definition in there. The definition, if I'm not mistaken, was developed by staff based on the, on the input from, from the, from the community service. Can you explain to us, for these RFP, what is the definition of undocumented?
Sure. Our target population, um, is for, uh, those residents whose legal status generally limits their access to public benefits. This includes undocumented immigrants and refugees with a variety of statuses such as people without lawful permanent residence, people who do not have a legal status as defined by U.S. Customs, DACA recipients, and asylum seekers, um, for example.
So, I mean, I, I think we all agree that may differ from the legal definition of undocumented. Uh, based on what we heard, um, from the testimony. But at the end of the day, these RFP had that very clear definition who was included.
Yes, it did.
Correct? Okay. Um, I, I may have a couple more powerful questions, but I'm gonna let, um, all the people in council proceed, if you don't mind. Thank you, Yolanda.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas, questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, uh, question is for the staff about the RFP and the deadline. And after the deadline, how many application did they receive? And, uh, I know, Yolanda, you already mentioned about Freedom, why you picked them. But what was the rationale, uh, after closing the RFP, looking into other applicants or other, uh, nonprofits?
Um, so I think Alder Abbas, um, I think what you're asking me, why was Freedom, Inc. selected out of, after being, um, submitted late?
No, what I'm saying is this, once the RFPs close, why the staff looked into other application? Like, the, from the process standpoint, once the deadline is over, and whoever is within that deadline, that's where, uh, the, the, my understanding is, that's where you start looking into that. Why the staff make that decision, they want to, after the deadline is over, they want to still look for other organizations? Is there any specific thing missing, or there was any strategy? Like, I'm just curious to hear.
Oh, um, we, again, let the, the data, um, kind of tell us the top three, um, undocumented immigrant populations, um, that were in the city of Madison, and recognize that one of those was of, um, the Asian population. Um, and we knew that Freedom, Inc., um, was, in, in reviewing their application, um, knew that they were the agency, the only agency who had indicated that they would serve, uh, predominantly the Asian, um, population.
And then who else was late besides Freedom, Inc.?
Um, so, there were applications that were not considered. Um, not necessarily because they were late, um, could have been because they did not meet another, um, eligibility criteria outlined in the guidelines. Um, I don't have the specific information for which application was late or which application did not meet another eligibility criteria, but there were four other applications that were not considered due to not meeting, um, eligibility criteria, whether that was late or some other reason. And those agencies were the Latino Professional Association, the Latino Chamber of Commerce, Lighthouse Church, and Unidos.
And those are, staff believe those does not match with the criteria of serving undocumented population.
Uh, no, that wasn't the reason why they weren't, um, they weren't deemed an application to be considered. One of the eligibility criteria is that an agency should have completed the survey that was sent out in October, or have had a conversation with CDD staff prior to submitting their application. That requirement is a requirement that we have regardless, regardless of the funding process. Opportunity for staff to talk to the agency to get a better understanding of what they're proposing in terms of their application, to make sure that it's in alignment with what the funding is in terms of availability. So that piece is, is always present in every process. Um, the second piece of that was the survey, um, which was intentional, right? We wanted to reach out to organizations, identify organizations that we know are serving. Relation, and so we, um, the two, um, the two requirements was either to have completed that survey or have had a conversation with CDD staff before submitting an application.
So did that, uh, having discussion with CDD staff, did that was communicated by the staff to the nonprofits? As the requirement, they were aware this is a requirement?
Yes, yep, yes, it was.
Okay. One last question is, uh, perhaps for Jim O'Keefe, if he's here. Yep, I can see Jim.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Jim, you're here. Jim, I'm curious, uh, in city history, as you have a lot of experience working in community development, how many time we accommodate, uh, regardless of, uh, status of nonprofit, what they do, or which area they work, how many times we, you know, go above and beyond criteria, or change the criteria? If change the criteria might be not the right word. But when the deadline is done, we accommodate. Do we do very often, or this is something very rare?
Alder, it's pretty rare. We, we, you know, develop structure through the, through the RFP. Um, we try to adhere to that as much as possible, but we can never anticipate all of the different circumstances that might arise and, um, and, and so on rare occasion, we've been known to, um, show some flexibility.
And this is legal? In, in any city RFP now, the question is broader. Because we not only do community service, we do business and economic development, so is it, might be a question for Attorney Haas or you, is it no legal issues with that, correct?
So Alder Abbas, I don't know if, if, um, if Attorney Haas is, i- is going to weigh in, but I would, what I would say to that question is that, uh, these are self-imposed, um, RFP parameters, so I, so I'm not so sure that, that it's so much a question of, of legality. Um, and, and very often in, in our RFP, um, documents, we do, um, afford, uh, there, there, there's often specific language that, that affords staff the ability to maneuver, depending on the kinds of responses we get. But, but, but to your basic question, um, we try very hard to adhere to the, to the parameters that we lay out in the RFP. And, um, though we might deviate from time to time, it's, it's the exception and not, not the rule.
Uh huh. Thanks, James. This is very helpful. Uh, is there, uh, Yolanda, you mentioned about data census data. I'm curious about, is there any other data was asked from nonprofit? Or, uh, any other data you guys have looked into that before you make a decision which organization is gonna get how much money?
Um, this was the primary data that we used in our funding recommendation.
So, there, is there any effort was put to reach out to nonprofits and asking them to share that, uh, exact data of which communities, or how many community member undocumented they represent besides census? With the census that I'm, I'm just, just having a hard time to understand how through census data you can, you can identify undocumented, undocumented people, because undocumented people does not fill the census form.
Right, and I, I don't know, um, I, earlier I mentioned that there, there really, really isn't any good data out there. Um, and so that was the, the, the data that we used, um, in terms of our funding recommendation. We did not put out a specific ask to agencies to ask for any, um, additional data. Um, although in their applications, um, most of the agents, agencies did provide some type of, um, data around the types of, um, immigrant populations that they are serving themselves as the agency, but outside of that, we did not ask for additional data.
Does city have an ability to verify that data? I'm not saying nonprofits are lying, but I'm just saying for sake of transparency, yes, undocumented people doesn't do census. Nonprofits engage with them, and if a nonprofit says, in a written, we serve A, B, Z community, I'm talking about in numbers. Now it's the number thing. Is there any way for staff to verify those data point?
So, um, I think there, there may be, I think it depends on the agency asking, um, that information of those that they're serving in terms of, you know, their background and, and, um, population. To best run the populations and the conversations that they, um, in their conversations and in their applications.
Okay, one last question regarding data. Uh, so during community development, unfortunately, again, that was not recorded. Uh, it came to my knowledge some data was being shared, uh, from nonprofits, so I'm curious what type of data was shared to the staff during deliberation at community development, uh?
The data, I think that you're referring to, Alder Abbas, is the data that was, um, presented by, um, the CSC member, by a CSC member. Um, and that data was, um, various, um, charts, um, I think I have some here. So one was links to various different, um, data from census, um, the country of citizenship, citizenship of international students, the top twenty country of citizenship of international students at UW-Madison, um, and profile of unauthorized, unauthorized population, um, of Wisconsin.
So, so from that data, census data, which community came on the top as most undocumented?
The Latinx. So the, the data that was shared at, um, highlighted the exact same thing that our data as staff highlighted in that the largest population in the city of Madison is Latinx. Um, so that, that's not anything that staff or I are disputing, um, again. But the, um, the data that we used also identified the African population as well as the Asian population, um, as other populations in the city of Madison, and so that's what we used in our recommendations.
Right. I might have more question, but I see a lot of hands raised, so I'm perhaps come back. Yolanda, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bitiver, questions for staff?
Thank you. Um, I'm just trying to understand sort of how we got here. So how, what was the process that was communicated to the CSC as to what their role would be in reviewing and making recommendations for these, and then how staff, um, reviewed those and then made a different recommendation?
Um, so before we even enter into a funding process, um, the first step, um, in my communication to the committee is to present them with what we are planning to do as a funding process. So we have this amount of funding available in ARPA funds. Um, we are going to conduct a stakeholder engagement, um, process with community-based organizations who serve this population. From that information, that is what we're going to use to help inform our application, um, guidelines and process. Um, so that information was presented to CSC at their January meeting. Um, and in that meeting, um, it was, um, shared with them then that we will, um, come back in February, um, to their meeting to present them with staff recommendations. When the applications are received, they're posted on our CDD website. Um, they are also sent out to all of the CSC members, um, so that they are able to review them, um, themselves before, um, the meeting. Um, and then at our, uh, once we've completed our, uh, internal staff review, we do share the staff recommendations, both with the CSC members as well as the applicants. Um, and then when we have our Community Services Committee, um, meeting in February, um, we, uh, um, present our recommendations to, um, the committee. Um, much of what I shared with you all tonight is what I shared with the committee. Um, and then, um, although they are staff recommendations, I make it very clear um, to the committee that they have the discretion to make, um, any changes um, or edits as they see fit, um, and kind of give it back over to them to have discussion amongst themselves. Of course, be available to answer any questions or provide any additional clarification that they may, um, that they may need, but it is ultimately the Community Services Committee who, um, makes the final, um, finalizes the recommendations at that meeting.
So then, h- how was it that then the staff recommendation is what got presented to finance for, to be the proposal to move forward to us tonight?
Um, the staff recommendation did not get presented to finance. It was the Community Services Committee's recommendation, recommendations that got presented to finance yesterday. Um, what happened, though, is that, um, and I, I don't know, Mayor, if Mayor Rhodes Conway is still here. Um, maybe she can shed some light on how we got to that yesterday.
Yep, Alder, the, the underlying motion, as always, was the recommendation from committee. Um, at finance, there was a motion to, uh, to move an alternate recommendation of the staff, uh, recommendation, so they, it, it's probably worth me taking a moment here, right? So it, the reason that the committee's recommendation is a substitute is because staff introduced this item by title only, or we collectively, at staff's recommendation, introduced this item by title only. So when the committee took it up and made their decisions, um, that became the substitute for the title only, right? And so the substitute is the committee's recommendations. And what's before us is the alternate, because finance committee moved an alternate of the staff recommendations. And so because finance was the most recent vote, it's their recommendation that comes to us directly. And I anticipate when we get through questions, there'll be a different motion, uh, but that's where we are. So just so everybody's clear, the substitute is the committee's recommendations, the alternate is the staff recommendations. The alternate is what finance committee voted for.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Uh, uh, Alder Martin, questions?
Yes, um, uh, first, um, I do want to say that, like, I appreciate the efforts of every single person and organization that has, uh, um, uh, like, uh, submitted RFPs, that, that wants to, wants to do this work. Um, and city staff going through all of this, putting out the RFP. I, I want to make it clear that we have been put in a kind of, um, uh, a really crappy situation where we have a finite amount of money to give to, um, uh, or, organizations that do a lot of really good work. Um, and I, I have, like, I have a question. I think it's probably for Attorney Haas, but it might be for somebody else, so whoever answers, um, that's fine. Um, I, what I want to ask is, so this is a grant that we are, um, uh, distributing that is, uh, from the federal government, it's ARPA funds. Do, does the city have any, like, do we need to worry about if we distribute this money in a manner that is not necessarily consistent with our RFP? Um, I, I would hate for us to miss out on future or, or other organizations missing out on, um, potential funding. Um, if, if we set a process and didn't necessarily, uh, or follow it to a T and jeopardize funding, um, from the federal government, from whatever, um, to either the city or to any of these organizations that would be receiving money. Does that question make sense? My head has been spinning all, like, this is just, it's such a, yes, I don't know if anybody has thoughts or an, an answer from city staff?
Um, Alder, that might be a question for finance because it's ARPA funding. I mean, it, I don't think there's an issue, but, um, I don't think there's an issue, but Director Schmidke can clarify.
Good evening, I don't think any sort of change in an RFP process would impact our eligibility for this ARPA funding or any future ARPA funding. So ultimately, this will be decided by the council and that is how, that is what, you know, the federal law will look to in terms of having some sort of process in place and then the governing body making a decision on that. I hope that helps.
It, it does, thank you so much for answering something that was kind of concerning to me, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Meade, questions for staff?
Was my hand still up? Actually, I guess I can ask it still because President Abbas kind of spoke on it or alluded to it, but I want to first start by thanking Yolanda and her staff, you know, during this unprecedented time and, and especially with this very convoluted issue. Basically, my question was, when I reached out to Vera Court to ask them the exact numbers of people that they reached out to or helped, they gave me precise numbers. I'm just wondering, you know, piggybacking on what President said. I just wanted to ask, are there specific numbers at least for every organization on people that they at least outreach?
Are you asking are that were there, did the agencies? Some did, some did not.
And was that taken into consideration for the approval process or?
What was taken into consideration is the population in which they intend to serve. How they plan to kind of assess for the needs of the residents and households that they're serving, along with application score, budget, and those types of things.
Okay, and I guess the last question, so every, every one of them was put into a certain score, right, of I don't know if that was a substitute that was done by the committee that was put into a scoring system or the finance did the same thing, but I guess, wasn't it a scoring system that you guys used in order to come up with who was to get the funding or?
No, the application score is just one piece of the criteria, so the most an applicant could have received was fifty points. But again, that was just one piece of, that's taken into consideration, it's not the sole determinant factor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Heng, McKinney, questions for staff?
I'm going to wait for the discussion, please.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboras, questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a combination of questions, including for legal counsel and then for CDD as well. I guess I'll start with Yolanda. First off, thank you everyone for for being a part of this important discussion, I want to thank the Community Services Committee for their great deliberation on this work. But also to city staff for, you know, doing the great work that they do in general and taking the time to review these RFPs and then come up with a scoring model and recommendations initially. That said, my question is either for you, Yolanda, or one of your colleagues. I know that you just referenced that the scoring model is one of several facets that you utilize for determining a recommendation, but just for my council colleagues, I'm utilizing exhibit, attachment seventeen is what I'm basing my questions off of here. You know, there was a fifty-point rubric that was created for the proposal scores. A number of folks who've been, or a number of organizations, I should say, who've been recommended kind of fell across a wide array of scoring. In a, somewhat in a sense that totally doesn't make sense to me as to why maybe some lower scores per se were were recommended for funding over higher scores, so I guess, you know, my question is, like, for example, like Vera Court and let's, you know, workforce development. Respectively, you know, a forty-four and a forty-two on that scoring rubric, which ties for the second highest score for the forty-four for the Latino workforce development and the third highest score tie for Vera Court. Both of them requested funding, but neither of them were recommended for funding and you know, by way of context, both very known and reputable for providing very good services to, you know, a broad constituency. That said, I guess I just want to have a better understanding as to like how two entities like that having such higher scores were still not recommended either for their full funding allocation or even a partial.
Right, so, one, again, we four is important, it's not the only factor for staff in terms of funding recommendations. Two, this is a really, although it's a significant, serving a significant need, it's a really small pot of funds across the number of applications that we received. And so it, it really came down to the staff prioritizing what we felt was, was best described in the agency's applications in terms of how they can immediately and quickly support our undocumented immigrant residents. So for Latino workforce development and Vera Court specifically, we, it wasn't a matter of if we had more resources to be able to fund additional agencies, we would certainly would have considered them for, for funding. I think it just really centered around the fact that some of the agencies that we did not recommend for funding, their proposals spoke more to a long-term investment versus an immediate, addressing an immediate need, which is really the goal of these funds to be used, as well as specifically for Latino workforce development and Vera Court neighborhood, although we know that these, we didn't have a good sense of what the funds would be used for, we were aware that they were recently awarded via the governor's grant process. I think close more, so felt that in terms of prioritizing the funds for other agencies who may not have been able to access that same unit. Does that help a little?
I think it helps, I don't necessarily know if I'm in agreement with that approach, but that said, that, that is somewhat helpful, so I mean, I've been able to review these RFPs and, and do you think that, you know, these entities spoke to their ability to mobilize quickly and supporting these entities? So I guess, I guess that's like a really forthcoming question, so the, the fact that these organizations did receive other funding was an aspect that you utilized for potentially not recommending them for this ARPA funding? Characterization?
For those two, Latino workforce development and Vera Court, that was one of the other factors that went into our decision in terms of funding recommendations. I mean, and I think just, again, I, I don't know how best I can say it, like, seven hundred thousand dollars, we had fifteen organizations that we were considering and we unfortunately just didn't have enough resources to spread amongst, amongst all of them.
No, I, I understand, this is a tough, tough spot that we're in and I think everybody here would agree that we, we wish there was other circumstances where we'd be funding all of these organizations at the full amount, at much greater amounts. And, and you know, I, I don't know if there's other press releases or things, there could have been other entities on here that had received recent funding as well. Madam Mayor, I would just like to redirect my questions now to Attorney Haas. Attorney Haas, when, when it comes to this, this issue of like being consistent and applying like our processes, you know, as consistently and effectively as possible, I just want to like sort of frame my questions around that. I'm, I'm wondering if there's, I mean, wouldn't it be probably fair to characterize the idea of by us sticking to a process and maybe certain timelines, whatever that was prescribed in an RFP? As a council, we would be having some, I would say like vigilant risk management by not exposing ourselves to allowing somebody that sort of breached that process to then be considered for funding. Would you say that that's probably a good characterization, like we'd be, it'd be a good risk management approach to kind of really stick to our funding to, to not, you know, really to protect ourselves from maybe folks who were also laid but then weren't considered for funding in this RFP process?
Thank you, Alder, I'll, I'll answer your question, but I want to preface it by saying that you know, I've been involved in this RFP process and, and nobody has asked us to look at any specific issues related to it. I would say in general, you know, and based on what Director O'Keefe says, it, it sounds to me like, and I wouldn't be, I don't think it's, it's especially surprising to say that there is some flexibility in the process, you know, I think that whenever the city you know, deviates from the process that is published and people come to expect, you know, people may raise questions about it, but I don't think I can sit here and say that there's a, that there's anything illegal about it or that it would necessarily you know, create a significant, you know, risk management issue for the city. It, it, it sounds like the, you know, the CDD's RFP process has enough flexibility built into it that the city would be on solid ground. Whatever it decides. And again, I, I'm saying that not having looked at the RFP document and not having been involved in the, in the process, but just based on my kind of surface understanding of, and listening tonight.
That's helpful, Attorney, maybe I'll rephrase my question, not necessarily to be smart and try and be, you know, a smart aleck and try and get a different answer. But I, I think maybe a more pointed question might be, I, I don't know if there's an appeal process in place for folks who've applied for these funding, this funding source specifically, but is there ground or is there standing for, say for instance, another organization who possibly applied late but was not considered for funding? Do they have standing or ground to either get into some sort of litigation or some sort of complaint? Anything like that, that they could have the possibility of, of being able to pursue action on?
I, I, I think the only answer I can give, and it's probably not going to be satisfactory, is that you know, any organization can, can sue the city about a decision they don't agree with. I really can't, you know, speculate about what the strength of, of that type of claim would be, you know, given the, the flexibility that's, that's built into the RFP process.
No, I, I wasn't looking for any specific question, I mean, any specific answer, I just wanted to pose the the question for you, Attorney, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Figaro, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor, hey, Yolanda, one more question for you, you mentioned something about a meeting in January presenting to the committee, can you elaborate what was the, the content of that presentation regarding this RFP?
Sure, the content of the presentation to the committee at that time was kind of to just walk them through where these funds come from in terms of being ARPA dollars, the federal requirements around them, in terms of how we need to allocate the funds. Talked a little bit about the community stakeholder input process, identify the community partners that we spoke to or sent the survey to, provided an overview of the input that we received in terms of the key challenges, what were the top three challenges of that. Some of the recommendations that we heard from agencies around being flexible with these funds, being more intentional about considering the needs of all populations, not just the Latinx population, and that legal assistance and housing are some of the biggest priorities and needs of the population. And then kind of went into the overview of the guidelines in terms of the target population, the focus services, and then provided the committee with a timeline for funding and preparing them for what they would, what would be presented to them at the February meeting.
Thank you, Yolanda, so was there any input from the committee on? Was there any input collected to, to participate in that process, to change the process, to add, remove to the process that you guys presented?
The input that we received from committee members, one was to be mindful of the undocumented immigrant population. There are people can interpret, interpret what undocumented immigrant, what that population is and what the definition is. And so being, making sure that we're clear in our guidelines and in reviewing of the application to make sure that that is that the agencies are, are truly indeed serving that population. Another big comment that came from the committee members was around data and to ensure that we were using data in our funding recommendations, which is what we did.
Thank you, Yolanda.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboras, you're not back in queue, right?
Uh, no, I, I must have not lowered my hand, my apologies.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboras, questions for staff?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, for you, Yolanda. Alder Alboras asked a question about the scoring. And in your answer, his question was Latino workforce development had a score of forty-four and Vera Court a forty-two, yet they weren't recommended. In your answer, which seemed to reference that there were other federal funds that had been granted to these organizations, but you kind of cut out, and I, I don't know if it was just my hearing or if it was the internet connection, but if you could specify, how much did Vera Court get and how much did the Latino workforce get in terms of a grant from the federal government recently? You considered when making your decision, do you know those, those numbers?
So for Vera Court, I think it was close to a million dollars for their Los Niños program. I'm, I'm not sure of the exact amount for Latino workforce development, but I believe it was somewhere near the same amount, if not more.
So when you say that this was a small amount of funds that were only seven hundred thousand in these two organizations, each got more than that, that kind of factored into you? How you made the decisions that you've made, correct?
It did, you know, again, recognizing that we, we only had seven hundred thousand dollars, we really wanted to first, make sure we're prioritizing the immigrant populations that was identified in the data, which was asked of us by the committee. But two, to also take into account other factors outside of the score, so geographic location, staff, capacity and experience in working with the undocumented immigrant population. If the budget was focused more on providing direct service and needs and assistance to residents and households versus kind of being more targeted towards staff or other kind of infrastructure needs.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, did the funding from the federal government for those two organizations, was it for an entirely different set of purposes? You know, were, were those funds also potentially used for undocumented residents of the city and therefore it felt like it could be redundant in some ways, or were, were, were those funds for something entirely different and not having any bearing on the subject of undocumented persons?
That I'm sure of in terms of how much would or is going to be allocated to support undocumented immigrant populations through those agencies. And it was, I think, maybe around five hundred thousand for the Latino workforce development in terms of funding that they received.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Halverson, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, question for Yolanda. You mentioned earlier that sometimes staff chooses people over process. What is the criteria for when staff is permitted to deviate from process in order to accommodate people?
So what I, what I said is I felt that staff wanted to prioritize people over process based on the data that we had in terms of knowing that one of the top three noncitizen undocumented immigrant populations in the city of Madison is the Asian population. Noncitizen undocumented immigrant populations in the city of Madison is the Asian population and knowing. Um, in reviewing the application from Freedom Ink, Freedom Ink, that they were the only ones that identified with solely serving that population. I, so I I I think that was really just our. That was why we did a decision to pull them back in for consideration is just based on the fact that. We know these funds are intended to serve the um undocumented immigrant residents and households. Um, and a along with the data, again, telling us who those um residents and households are in terms of population. And background, we wanted to do um put forth recommendations um that would speak um to that. So um I don't, I I won't say that we necessarily have a um a. Process in place. Um, I think to go back to um what my director Jim O'Keefe said. There are instances where um flexibility um is made, and this was one of one of those times where staff felt that we needed to be flexible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and then Madam Mayor, I have one question for Attorney House. Attorney House, um, just to clarify, I just wanted to clarify. Assuming he's still here, right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that the legal opinions you're providing tonight are done in the absence of you reviewing the RFP document we're discussing. Is that correct?
Yes, I've I have not reviewed the RFP document. I I think that um. That, you know, the RFP, as I said before, it's a, I mean, this is a legislative decision is is what it comes down to. So I I I don't, I don't have a significant concern. Or I I I don't have a concern about, you know, the council being able to make this decision. E- e- either either way.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alder Harrington McKinney, is it a question?
Yes, it is a question. Um, and it's either for um Jim or Yolanda. Uh, well, let me just ask for Yolanda. In the um community meeting, and I don't have the date. Where the um RFP was uh presented to the community. Did you have the um the data to make sure that um? All, I won't say all elements, but that the community representing those specific populations. Were present and got the information related to dates, times, process, and what was actually requested in the RFP?
Are you speaking of the community agencies that applied or the Community Services Committee members?
Well, um, um, isn't the process for when an RFP is um presented? That you have a community-wide meeting explaining um the dollars and the process. For um applying for the R- RFP?
We do have RFP workshops, some of our RFP um processes. For this application process, we um had the targeted survey. Um, and then we also had one-on-one conversations with agencies that were identified as serving this population.
Okay, nice. Okay, go on. I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say that was where we got our feedback, feedback and input from, the survey and then in those conversations.
So in the survey and in those conversations. Uh, the 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 community organizations that was targeting the groups. Knew the um the criteria, the dates. And all of those processes necessary to get that application into um. Uh, into for consideration. And what I'm getting at is is that uh the dates, the times, the 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 follow-through for the RFPs. That went to the targeted populations that provided services to undocumented individuals. Is that correct?
That is correct. The application guidelines were were sent out. Yes.
Okay, and in those application guidelines, the specific dates and outline. Related to um uh the RFP was included in those discussions, conversations. And also um uh the guidelines?
They were included in the guidelines that were sent out to all of the agencies. So the conversations in terms of. The survey was prior to the application being released. If agencies had not completed the survey, then they would have had to reach out to one of the CDD staff to have a conversation to say. We are interested in applying and then in within that conversation is where staff would. Um, first, you know, make sure that they um are eligible and can meet the criteria outlined in the application. Um, guidelines, but then walk through and talk through some of those other um important reminders and things like that.
Okay, my final question is um having the data in hand. And recognizing um which um. Uh, targeted population needed to be served. Uh, was there indication of what was missing? And that's what I'm I'm getting at. Was there an indication of what was missing when when you got all the RFP responses in?
Yes, um, and what was missing was the Asian population.
And you determined that um at the close of the RFP process? Or during the R- RFP process before it closed?
We determined that during the app, the staff application review process. So once the applications were submitted, um, staff um come together, we review and we discuss. Um, those applications, along with the data that we had been collecting around um. Who this population is in the city of Madison. With that data and with the review of those applications. We identified that there, based on that data, there was a population that was not. Um, primarily to be served via any of the application responses. And so that is when staff decided um that we wanted to reconsider um Freedom Inc.'s application based on who they were serving.
Okay, but that was not determined prior to the twelve o'clock noon cutoff date?
That was not. At at that time, when the applications were submitted at noon on January twenty-eighth, they were late. So they they got a, they got an email saying that they were late.
Okay, they got an email from staff saying that the application was received but was received late.
Yeah, any, so when when applications are submitted. The first step is we're we're checking to make sure that they're eligible, not just timestamp. But are they eligible? Do they have the the correct documentation that needs to be attached or any other eligible eligibility criteria? Outlined in the guidelines, do they meet that? So we had, when we go through that, we identify those that are um eligible to be considered for further consideration. And then those that are not. They are contacted that very same day most times. And that's maybe why we have the noon deadline is so that we have an opportunity to kind of. Sift through some of that and and be able to contact agencies if needed.
Okay, all right. So that noon diet, that noon deadline or that time dine. That time deadline is not specifically a cutoff. It is just a flexible moving um timeline to allow you enough time. So I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm just trying to understand why the noon deadline.
That that is the deadline for submission of the application. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a buffer or it's not a flexibility piece. It that is the the time that the applications have to be submitted by. So anything after that, um, and it's outlined on our application, late submissions will not be accepted. So anything after that twelve o'clock noon Central Standard Time. Is is considered um an application that will not be considered further, based on the fact that that application was late. But there may be other factors as well outside of the timestamp that will also determine eligibility for an applicant.
Okay, thank you. I so appreciate uh you hanging there and answering all of our questions. And so I'll have more during the discussion. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alders Elboras and Abbas, you you've both had a chance to ask questions multiple times now, really?
Yeah, a question one time, I believe, but yeah, I'd appreciate an opportunity to ask questions again. Yolanda, I have a question regarding the scoring again, um, and the. The concept that an organization um presumably doing really good work to get other funding sources. Is um essentially being penalized, so to speak, for for that. Uh, my my question is, because you you shared that for for Veracor. And Latino Workforce Academy, that that was a factor that played into not receiving funding or not being recommended for funding. To be more accurate in my statement, um. My question, I I don't really know how staff got wind of that. Maybe it was a press release or it was maybe a social media post. I'm not really sure. My question is, did staff diligently look at the other organizations that were recommended for funding, like? Doing Google searches or trying to determine whether other organizations, like, did you? Did you try and vet that out too for the other organizations that you did recommend for funding that they had not received other? Sizable or just in general, recent funding allocations, be it from the city, federal government, state, et cetera?
Um, so I want to answer your question. Um, I I want to be clear that our, my staff are not penalizing anyone. Um, it really came down to the fact of the amount of funding that was available, the number of agencies that applied. Um, and the target populations to be served based on the data. That is what drove our funding recommendation decisions. Um, the score is one piece of that. It is important, but there are other factors that we take into consideration as well. Um, in terms of uh being made aware of Latino workforce development in Veracor Neighborhood Center. We did, multiple staff received that via email um on a list that we all are on about that funding opportunity. And about the announcement of the award. So that's how that information um came to us. Um, we did not do any um specific Google searches or any other type of um. Research on agencies um as a part of our funding recommendations.
Got it. Um, that's helpful. I I guess my commentary, and there could also have been.
Other questions? You'll you'll have time for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yolanda, I appreciate the the response. It's helpful.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas?
Yep, and Madam Mayor, I know this is my second time, so I appreciate the reminder. Uh, Yolanda, one quick question. Uh, you discussed about census data and. Looking to organizations which are missing representation in Southeast Asian community. I'm curious. During staff recommendation, you look into South Asian community, Middle East community, those undocumented immigrants? Uh, or is there any organization who working on those undocumented immigrant or not?
So the North Madison Collaborators and. Rise Wisconsin, I believe, are the two agencies who um identified working with multiple groups. Um, just outside of um the top three. And in our data um that we collected, there is a small percentage of other. Um, which includes multiracial and other race or ethnicity outside of Asian, black or Hispanic.
All right, I will speak to that in my comments. Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions for staff. And remind us that the motion before us is the alternate staff recommendation. Uh, and we're now into discussion. Alder Benford.
Oh, goodness. Thanks, Mayor. Hope you're doing good and all my colleagues. Mayor, I'm gonna say some things I think you and all my colleagues will agree on that. Through the testimony of the people who came and people who represent the agencies. And we know that there's seven hundred million couldn't address the needs, seven million. So here we have seven hundred thousand. We all know that there's not enough money. Uh, I think we can all agree that there is some amazing community-based organizations that. Have amazing dedicated people that work with them that try to help. Historically marginalized, especially my other job. I work with children and families who don't know if. A loved one's coming home or someone. Knocks at the door for fear of things we can't, most of us can't imagine. So we know the need is. I I would also offer, Mayor, that uh we have amazing staff. I think they've done their due diligence. And we have a system where we have a committee. And those of us that serve on committees that fund. Uh, whether it's community services or city, county, homeless issues or. The Homeless Services Consortium, whenever money comes out and you have to make these tough decisions. With limited money, we we, once again, we just all know that. So, Mayor, I'm really kind of troubled because here's staff did their due diligence. And Yolanda, eh, to her credit, uh, they worked hard and they did what we're charged to do. They sent it back to Community Services, said, hey, take a look at this. Knowing that, knowing that there's just not enough and that there's tremendous need. And we heard the emotions from the speakers, many people that I've known for decades. That I can tell you are doing amazing work. We heard the sensitivity. We heard the raw emotions. And we heard something that I find really disturbing, that community-based organizations pitted against each other. So I got the same air and where I'm sitting, my observations, by us. And and I think it's fine that we scrutinize these things. I think that's our our charge too. But by us spending these hours. Talking about this, knowing that uh it's almost impossible to make everybody happy. I I I have to tell you, I'm one of the Alders on the Community Service Committee, along with Vice President Martin. There was deliberate, considerate, intentional conversation at that meeting. And I heard that there wasn't a a a recording that you can go back and watch. I find that regrettable, but what I find really regrettable is that through these conversations, I hope. Some of us could pause to recognize that it's like pulling a bandage off and dumping salt in the wound that. It it it's just, we're, whether we know it or not, we're facilitating this divisiveness. With this action right now. So, yes, we, it it's our job to scrutinize these things. But it's also our job to have faith in the volunteers, the people that show up and. Serve on these committees that have real-life expertise beyond what many of us would ever have. And people that spoke tonight from the community. So rather than all these hours and all this energy expended. I was hoping that we could hear the message that there's just not enough money and recommit our energies. And our passions to ensuring that all these other agencies someday will be properly funded. And as new ones come along, whatever we can do to help people reach their full potentials. So I hope we don't spend a ton of time in comments questioning or wondering if staff, how they scored or what they did. The bottom line is it came back to the committee that I serve on, that another Alder serves on. And just like all of you, you serve on committees and boards. And that there's a point where, whether it's a leap of faith or not, we have to believe in the process. So what I found reassuring is people before process, and that's exactly what we did. That's exactly what we accomplished by our conversations. So I just want to say that to my colleagues, Mayor, and hope that we don't spend another three hours, once again, wondering if. Staff did their due diligence or mistakes were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Elboras?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in the vein of what Alder Benford said, I'd like to move the substitute, which actually was the recommendation of, uh, Community Services Committee.
I will second it.
There's a motion and a second to take us to the substitute, the committee recommendation. Alder Abas, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Um, thank you, colleagues, for indulging me during my, uh, couple of rounds of questions. I know that some others have done that in other, uh, meetings for, for items that they're very passionate about, so I appreciate your patience in that regard. Um, I'll just be honest, I, I think that this is a very triggering and a very, uh, traumatic and just very emotional, uh, process and conversation for everyone involved. I want to acknowledge and validate that. Um, I think we saw that very, very openly and raw in public comment, um, from, from all of the speakers, and so I want to thank those folks who did come out. Um, and I do want to thank, uh, the members of the Community Services Committee that did have a really long and hard, strong deliberation. I was there, I'll just say. I was not only just a fly on the wall, but I was a spectator and an engager during that meeting, and so um, have really strong situational awareness of that discussion that did play out, uh, during that meeting. Um, that said, I, I do want to talk about and center and validate, um, the Latino or Latinx struggle of undocumented folks within not only Dane County, but within our country, right? It's, 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 it's not, I hope, not a secret that this community has been demonized and villainized by by highest elected officials within our country, um, over the last several years. They're unfortunately victims of a broken federal system that there's no political capital or political will to, to create reasonable immigration fixes, right? To, to help alleviate some of these, uh, pains and traumas that we, we, uh, uh, we, we see, uh, in Latinx community, um, not only within, you know, Madison and Dane County, but across the United States. Um, I can share, I was a, a member of, of stakeholder groups and, and community groups that were really trying to just be generally responsive to the Latinx community in general for the last seven, eight years in Madison. Um, but in twenty eighteen, there was some real, real issues that happened when ICE came to our community and began, um, arresting folks who were undocumented. I can't tell you the amount of trauma that not only did the people who are actually undocumented live and have to feel like, just even being undocumented in general, like going and driving to work is, is a scary thing, right? Like it, it is very scary to even go to receive medical care, because you're going to what could be perceived as an official uh, institu- institution or an official organization, you know? Um, so the trauma that was, that was there during that, during that time in twenty eighteen was, was real, not only for the service providers that were trying to triage and provide support, whether it was legally, or, um, whatever the case was in terms of like getting access to mental health services, um, you know, separation of family, all those sorts of things. Even the providers experienced trauma, but that is nothing in comparison to the folks that we're actually talking about, um, that were impacted directly from this. Um, you know, I'll just say that there was an article, um, in the Isthmus during that time called Four Days of Terror. Um, and in the footnote, it said, if you, uh, if you have, you know, an, an ICE activity, call Central Hispanic, right? It said that in the footnote of that article. It said, if you know people who are affected by ICE arrests, please contact our Dane County, uh, Immigration Affairs Coordinator, Fabiola Hamden. These are two people who have spoken today in public comment, who by some fine journalists within our community have been known and memorialized in, in journalistic writings about what happened, um, with ICE raids, to be those folks that you should be sending resources to. And those folks have spoken to you tonight and said, you should uphold the substitute. Uh, you should uphold the allocation, uh, recommendation of the Community Services Committee. Um, you know, I, I want to speak to the, the concept of like, of committee work, right? Um, a part of that is to really help do a lot of the legwork and, you know, the mayor appoints folks that serving on those bodies, uh, whether, you know, we're talking about Community Services Committee, Public Charity Review Committee, Plan Commission, et cetera. You want to have, you know, a diversity of folks in there that do represent the community, to have a good perspective that they bring. And so I, I would just encourage us to, to think about that, that there was good, strong deliberation. It was, it was not easy, it was tough. Discussions that were had there, and I think the recommendations that that committee put forward are reflective of the need of the populations in our community, and also those organizations that have a lot of trust and, um, community connections to make those, uh, those dollars be mobilized immediately, um, once they, once they hit those coffers. Um, you know, I think that the committee also did a good job of trying to address the potential flaws that happened in this, uh, in this process here, um, you know, and the way, you know, some of the actions that they took at that, at that meeting really addressed that. Um, so, again, I, I also want to talk about the fact that, you know, the scoring, like you have an organization that was tied for the second highest score, Latino Workforce Academy, but was not recommended an allocation. I don't, you know, I think that there is a good discussion happening here, but I don't think that an entity should be, um, quote-unquote penalized, I would say, or not given a recommendation, a recommendation for funding because of the fact that they've received other funding. Um, so I, I, I just feel like I think we should really uphold the fact that a rubric was made and that a, a strong RFP was made. So, you know, if it was scored higher, that meant that it was meeting all those benchmarks that staff was looking for. So I think we should really memorialize that. And again, this substitute and the recommendation of the Community Services Committee absolutely does that. Um, you know, I'm almost out of my comments, but I, I will say that I, again, I can't say how triggering, triggering and emotional that this discussion is for, for many, many folks, um, and all involved. And I really would just strongly encourage my colleagues to, uh, support this substitute, um, for, for a number of reasons. Um, one, it's, it's centering our most vulnerable population when we talk about, uh, funding, uh, services that are going to be supporting undocumented communities. Uh, two, it's going to uphold a really strong delivery of action that came from Community Services Committee last week. Um, you know, I think this would help memorialize and, and, you know, sort of validate those discussions that were had there. Um, and, and lastly, it would be, um, you know, really supporting those that had a strong RFP submission, um, but are also known reputedly for for providing tho- those services that we need for our Latinx populations in Madison. Um, thank you so much. I appreciate you, you as my colleagues, listening to me, um, and I look forward to seeing how this discussion goes.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, on the substitute, Alder Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, but I am not going to speak. I think that what has been said has been said, and anything that I could add to it would be repeating. So, I'm bowing out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro call.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I want to actually, I'm going to avoid repeating what, what everything was said. I cannot disagree with, uh, Alder Benford or Alder Arboras', um, feedback on this regard. I, I I have no disagreement with everything said, um, thus far. Um, I have been, I was there when, when the community needed support for the ICE, um, the ICE raids. I know exactly what the situation was at the time. Um, we went on the streets, um, making sure that people were safe. So it's not like that is totally foreign to me. Um, and when it comes about discussing or talking about how emotional cheating this is, oh, tell me about it. It has been a, a fun day to be the only Latin, the Latino person who is questioning, um, the judgment, um, in favor of the Latinx community. So I really want to make it very, very clear, uh, the, send a very clear message. I mean, there is this idea out there that, uh, somehow, um, this alternate is seeking to look, is seeking equity, and I don't, I don't understand where that is coming from. Nobody's talking about, about this to be equal. We're talking, actually, the thought is that I'm seeking for equal treatment, and I'm not looking for equal treatment. What I'm saying is that this RFP was, was made on a very equitable, um, grounds. It went and saw and seek o- organizations that provided the service, and it focused and centered on those organizations. So I couldn't ask, um, for a more equitable way to run an RFP. What I'm saying is that, um, the staff recommendations were more inclusive of the communities, of the undocumented communities that we currently have in Madison. I am not saying take away from the Latinx community. That is not what I'm saying. I am saying provide, provide funding to organizations that serve the Latinx community in addition to other organizations, and make it more inclusive. We, we heard testimony of people discussing how we have been oppressed as the Latinx community. Oh, believe me, I know how we've been oppressed. So if we know how that feels to be oppressed and to be treated like less than other people, we should have the bigger, we should be able to, eh, to have the empathy to include other people that have similar experiences. And that's where the problem comes to me on this particular, um, distribution of funds. So, um, so that's, that's my point, my point one. Now, as a city, we have made a commitment to, to do things on an equitable and inclusive way. And every single process in the city should be infused with those elements. We shouldn't just be picking and choosing which element I'm going to be using today. And again, I have said this many, many times before, we all like to throw those words around, equity and inclusion at any, at any point in our conversations, but here we have an opportunity to actually act on it. And again, inclusion matters. I, I know that for some people that is irrelevant. I heard that today. I have people from the community telling me inclusion doesn't matter in this, in this particular thing. We just need to be equitable to the people that need it the most. Well, marginalized communities need it the most, and that's what this RFP was targeting, not just one group of that marginalized communities. The second part of these, um, the second part of, of, um, that I want to raise is process. I think it has been very clear that we're lacking processes around this, around this system. We have, um, a process that started with us. We, the council, gave direction to staff, a very, very vague direction on how to do their job. So if there's issues on this process that has brought us to this point right here, that started with us. Us, the twenty of us, didn't provide clarity to staff on how to proceed. So if anybody here needs to take the blame for this process's fiasco, it should be all of us, not staff, not the, the, the Community Service Committee. So, um, so we provided a very vague direction. Staff made a, made the most of that, and they presented a set of, a set of recommendations that they shared with the Community Service Committee back in January. At that point, if there's issues with the process that staff is going to manage, I mean, this is not the first RFP that these two groups manage. So if there's issues with the, whatever RFP they're working on, that is the time for them to discuss what to do different, and what to do better, on how to manage those processes. That's where you can go and discuss about the scale, or about the, um, who do you want to include in your RFP. Again, the staff went to the, to the same organizations that are getting funding today and asked what they needed. And they created, created an RFP based on the staff recom- the staff, the community recommendations. So, what transpired at the Community Service Meeting, yeah, the few of you that were, that were, um, privileged to be there, I mean, there's many meetings happening at many different times, and we cannot be there all the time, and every single meeting in the city, you know what happened there. The, some of us have to hear what happened there from second, from second, um, um, hand or whatever. Again, the meeting is not recorded. I mean, I, I'm not so into this stuff today, but it's, it's a fact, the meeting is not recorded. So it's hard for all of us to make a clear assessment on how the discussion went. So let's then talk, like, since we are, again, talking about processes, let's do, let's just take a minute to consider what is the role of the Community Service Committee. I mean, they, they have multiple roles, and just give me a second here, I'm just going to read a couple of things from the ordinance, and investigate new and innovative methods for delivery of human services. Recommend policy to the mayor and council in the area of community services. Make recommendations to the mayor and supervisor on how to manage budgets. And on and on, there's a long list here of items that that committee is charged with. So, again, processes at all levels of these systems are collapsing. And who's, and, and there's not one single person to blame. So however, the buck stops back on us. We started this process, and we started, started it in a way that was not perhaps as efficient as she should be. At the end of the day, we have the opportunity and the responsibility to rectify our own our own, um, input or our own actions. So all I'm asking is, I'm not asking you, anybody, any of you, I mean, I'm not asking, um, I'm not saying we should not fund the Latinx community. I am not saying the Latinx community is not the largest community in Madison. It's the largest community in the country. I am not saying that. I am not saying that the undocumented ratios are higher. All I'm saying is that there are, there are organizations in the city that serve multiple, multiple communities, and the funding should be spread to allocate some of it and open spaces for people that are none on the Latinx, on the Latinx spectrum. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying even less. I am saying include the rest of the population as most as you can. And that was part of the, of the survey. The survey came back, and these are the, the three groups that we want to serve. So I, um, I mean, it has been, let's talk about emotions. It has been quite an emotional day. Right? I mean, for everybody that called in today, for all of you, and, and I acknowledge that. But I am not going to sit here and apologize for bringing forward to this body a process that definitely has shown today that needs a lot of improvement. And we are responsible for that process. So let's, let's work together to serve our community better. I, this is the second RFP, RFP that goes to this committee, and the second time that we are scrambling. It's time for us to take this serious and work on the three entities, the city council, the committee and staff, on how to develop processes that are, that are a baseline for any other RFP that comes their way. So thank you for letting me, um, you know, for listening to me, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. Um, and I hope that I am not going to support these, um, these, um, resolution. I, I would like for staff to, I would like to, to keep the staff, um, recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, discussion on the substitute.
Yes, so I feel like a lot of us already have how we're going to vote solidified. So what I say might probably won't make a sense, but as I told Patrick several times, I like talking. Um, but I, I think it's important to recognize that we are in a very tough spot right now. Like in a utopian society, all of these organizations should get funded. And I think it's important to recognize that and assume that we all have good intentions. When I heard, I, I've done, when I, like, researched into this topic and listened to both sides of what, what is going on, I hear the same thing from everyone. Everyone wants to help undocumented immigrants in Madison. That's what everyone here wants to do. And some of us just have different ways of going about that. Some of us either want to recognize that many of the, of the undocumented immigrants in Madison are of Latina origins. Others want to recognize that while that may be true, um, there are, um, also undocumented immigrants in Madison that aren't of Latina origins. And I find it absolutely infuriating that we have once again created a situation in which we're pitting black and brown people against each other in this city. We're once again having black and brown people fighting over pennies, or, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, like peanuts. Um, when they all deserve this funding. So, I want to recognize that. I've also heard a lot- So I want to recognize that I've also heard a lot about how people, some people are upset that Freedom Inc. was considered or whatnot, whatever, whatever. I personally think that it would have been more fair if um we just, whoever was late, extended the deadline to, I think Freedom Inc. said they got it in at four P M. If if they want to accept Freedom Inc., just extend the end deadline to the end of the business day at five P M. And that would have rectified a lot of these issues that we're ha- that we're having right now. So Jeanette said, like, you know, we want to tell staff what to do. I think that was a poor decision to choose that one organization. Um, I think Freedom Inc. deserved to be considered, but I also think in all fairness, if we're going to allow exceptions, then we should have allowed it for every applicant that was late. Um, and that being said, I wish that we could come to a compromise that on this, and I think that there is a compromise that could be made. Um so I'm voting how I'm voting because um, a lot of, I have a few things, some of which I'm not gonna say, but I think I want to help the most people right now. And it's a really tough decision to make. So I'm really sorry that we're in this situation. It's not fair to any of us.
Thank you, Alder. Um, Alder, I'd just remind you to please address your colleagues by their titles. Uh, Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't belabor and share many comments that were already said before. Um, but I think I should, do need to speak um from my seat as someone who works within the nonprofit system here. Um, we've had enough evidence within council and funding decisions to see that the amount of funds um in ARPA, unprecedented amount of funds coming in, still isn't enough to meet the need. Um, and I just want to recognize and thank everyone from city staff to the Community Services Committee, to folks that are still spending their time listening to what's going on now and are advocating. No one's comments should be invalidated tonight and it should speak volumes to us as a council about policy and process and what we can influence and what we can change. And not entering into narratives that pit BIPOC communities, marginalized, oppressed, unable to access benefits um that everyone else or a majority of our population can. Um, I also want to remind us as a council to uh the same way that we would expect humanity from our constituents, from city staff, from our peers, um to extend humanity in this in this space. I know that there's been a lot of questions about process, about whether it's legal, whether exceptions should or shouldn't be made. And I just want to remind you all that nonprofits are in very real RFP fatigue. There's been a lot of funding, it's been great, but because we don't have consistent processes, because we have so many nonprofits per capita, we see how our processes are pitting organizations against each other. Um, the fact that an RFP was even needed to be created states the fact that there would be an issue if the city just allocated one or a couple agencies funding based on their long continued service of providing service to undocumented communities. So I just want to recognize that I see everyone, I hear everyone, um I wish I could have been um present for the C S C meeting to take in that personal observation, but I'm not. So based on what I have from my experiences, what I've heard in testimony tonight, as well as that um perspective as a social service provider in this nonprofit system right now. Um, I do not support uh going back to the committee's recommendations for the fact that, again, um I think we remember when uh we were dealing with DACA at a federal level. And um, who is the ideal immigrant or who belongs, who deserves to stay? That's the same thing that's being done here tonight. So I would implore us again to think, yes, majority needs to have access, but does that mean that smaller populations or those that don't mean a majority also do not need that assistance? The fact that there were all these responses, nineteen responses to this RFP points to that. They all are in need and we're not talking about a white privileged population. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney on the substitute.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I've been listening intently to all the conversations back and forth. And um earlier, probably an hour or so ago, um one of the alders asked the question, well, how did, how did we get here? How we got here is um out of the Finance Committee, the recommendation was to overturn the work of the uh Community Service Commission. That's how we got here. The other thing is how we got here is is that when we talk about processes, that's when when I hear the word process, it is a thorn in my side because we use the term process when it fits and it's comfortable for us and it's not consistent. We are at this place because we said, well, there is a process that we put out, but that process is flexible. And that is where I have the problem, is is that um we are pitting one, and it's unfortunate, we all know that there is not enough money. But to to say we are not aware that we're putting, pitting one agency against the other, yes, we are pitting one agency over the other. And we are valuing one agency over the other. We should not be doing this. The Community Service Committee um did due diligence. Um, they um uh reviewed the applications and they made a recommendation. And that recommendation um should be followed. There was a timeline and it it is seems unfair to penalize those who were in line with the stated objectives and times for the uh RFP to go back and make an adjustment for whatever reason. If you're going to use a process, that process needs to be consistent. And if there is no process, say that there's not, and let's just take the word process out of our vocabulary. Um, I've been very critical of some of the allocations of the Community Service Committee before. But in this instance, if the process was followed, if the timelines were followed, the applications were received uh according to the RFP, I am going to have to support um going back to the recommendation of the um Community Service Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Boss on the substitute.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, it's emotionally really drainage. It's uh emotionally really hard because I personally know the struggle of immigrants. I was not undocumented. I was privileged. I had an opportunity, could be undocumented if my visa expired. And if I couldn't get extension in U S, uh, there were times where I thought I might be undocumented too. But got an opportunity, got a job and stayed here longer and things worked out. But I know many people who who got undocumented over state. I know people who came to FIFA World Cup in Brazil and go through really dangerous life journey crossing the border through Panama and through Mexico into U S. I mean, know many of those people as well. Worked in New York City, know how undocumented people are abused. Especially, majority of them are actually Latino and Latinx and coming from Central America. And got paid four dollar, three dollar, while the minimum wage back in two thousand eleven, twelve was New York City eight dollar fifty cent or eight dollar twenty five cent, I don't remember, but I've seen those struggles. Um, I do think so. The reason I'm sharing that, like, it's very hard to to hear various organizations and also some organizations talking about helping immigrants as well, and I understand they also have their needs too. People have families in other part of the world and undocumented uh resident of Madison also need help. Uh, both are, and and I agree with the uh Alder Benford. There's not enough money. I really wish that's the bottom line. It's, I don't see it's fault of the staff or fault of this and that, but there's not enough resources. Having said that, I also, I think so we as a city need to look into more innovative uh I I don't want to use word process, but more innovation around how we allocate fundings. Perhaps what Karen was talking about RFP, I think so. There are some merit to that argument. And then we have community development. I do think so where we end up tonight, which is very unfortunate. I really wish we would not be debating this uh very emotional and traumatic discussion on the floor if we could have just follow community development recommendation because they've been through this whole uh emotional journey. And and that's where we are. And I think so we we need to, but again, whatever the process you like or don't like or it's broken or not broken, it is there and it is committee who worked and specialized for that and and provide those opportunity. And I agree with Alder uh Alder McKinney, we choose process as we desire, however you say. So I will support the substitute. I I think so. Lot of work and time was spent there. And hearing from both side, I I do think so, that direction is something we should move forward. Having said that, I do think so there's a broader need for immigration purposes and funding and perhaps city in future federal or some other city should look into that and also look into Middle Eastern communities, South Asian community. Those communities are mostly neglected in a bigger picture because data is not accurate and this whole my own professional experience working with data, energy data, of course, not census. But data could be really very easily, you could create a lot of arguments around that. I'm not saying manipulate, but you have to take caution with with data as well. And anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martin.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Um I want to um acknowledge that this is probably one of the harder decisions that we've had to make uh during my tenure here on city council. Um, the work that uh city staff has done to put together an RFP to evaluate and um share those evaluations with uh C S C, with the Finance Committee and with us here at Council Tonight, um they've done tremendous work. Um, the organizations that have applied for this funding, they also do tremendous work. Um, and it I I can't lie, it it breaks my heart that we are, that that we have to um argue or not, I don't even want to say argue, um but that we have to consider um these these differences in, for a pot of money that is woefully inadequate for everything. And and that that is not the fault of anybody here. Um, it's not the fault of anybody who works for the city or works for these organizations or have, you know, put together these RFPs or apply for them. Um it sucks. It 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 just sucks. I I know that everybody who has been involved in this conversation tonight cares deeply about the welfare of undocumented folks in the Madison area. And I don't want that to get lost. I don't, I I it's been mentioned a couple of times previously tonight about um pitting underserved communities against each other and and that's, that's what's happening and it's I understand the frustration and the concern that every single person who's testified tonight, who testified at C S C, who testified at the Finance Committee, who has um, you know, sent any kind of information to their alders or to the mayor's office. We, we all just want to be able to help our undocumented, undocumented neighbors um access the the funding and the services that they need, that they, that that are beyond hard for them to access outside of this funding. Um, you know, it's a- again, it breaks my heart. I I I'm I'm really sad that 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 we are, like, that all of us are in this position. Um, but our task today as a council is to figure out how we divvy up an insanely small amount of money that we've been given from the 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 federal government to fix these huge global isn't the right word, but like, but these these huge issues that affect our neighbors, our friends and our family, you know, um and and I don't want to lose sight of that. We, everybody here that has like, has testified, who has have thought, have had thoughts, um, everybody that said anything, you know, I I really feel that, like, ultimately, we are all on the same page. And it makes me so sad that we, that we have to fight about this, this pot of money that's gonna do great things, but is is not enough for what we all expect and what what our um undocumented, undocumented uh residents deserve. Because they deserve far much more than you know, what we have available. Um unfortunately, we have this sum. And we have to figure out as policymakers how to make the most good come out. How do we make the most impact? Um uh to our communities with this very small amount of money. And I it, again, none of us want to deny folks um money or services in order to uh, you know, improve the lives, the uh the the, you know, um standard of living or anything for folks who have come here with this American dream and um who have come here risking amazing, like, I I don't know that most of us can comprehend the things that 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 folks who come here undocumented have to give up or that they're risking. Um you know, as 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 a native person, as a Ho-Chun person who who is representing um a- an area that that my ancestors have lived on for time immemorial, you know, there's a lot of folks that are like, oh, natives don't like immigration. That's not that, that's, that's not it. We, you know, I I see these things. I apologize for pontificating. I just, this is a big deal and 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 I don't want anybody to think that I or um any other member of this body is taking this lightly because I know that we are not. Um, I know that we are all very empathetic and uh folks that want to do the best that we can. And um I think about, you know, this, this land, this area, um and where, again, my ancestors have lived for centuries, uh millennia, whatever, whatever kind of like time period that you want to say. And you know, I I I feel like it's, it's really important for us to provide this like welcoming space. You know, um and and that this is where we live. This is, you know, again, this This is, you know, again, this is where my ancestors have been. Um and I don't blame for folks. For wanting to come here for the safety. Um it's really pretty here, you know, like. Sorry, uh you know, I just. I I want us to be able to help as many folks who are vulnerable. And don't have access to the things that they need in order to survive or to thrive. If if there is something that we can do as a city to help, I know that I want to do that. And I know that. Every member of this body, I know that every member of city staff, that is our goal. And and again. All of the the organizations that have uh applied for this. So again, we. Uh like the twenty of us and the mayor who we are the policymakers for the city and we have to. Make these insanely difficult decisions as to what is going to help. The most and the most people. And during our. CSC can uh conversation. We, you know, we we again appreciate all of the um recommendations that staff gave us. But there are many people on the the CSC committee. Who have direct experience working with organizations and and um working with uh uh. Our undocumented community. And um. We decided or we we. Thought that the the biggest impact that we can make with this way too small amount of money. Was what we pers- what we proposed. And 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 it was, uh I I believe the the substitute. Substitute, not the uh uh amendment. But we really felt that. There would, we could serve more people in the way that we um. Or or with the re- recommendations that we put out from that committee. I again. This is really hard and RFP fatigue is real and and. All of us that are caregiver fatigue is real and, you know, I I. It breaks my heart that we don't have enough to share. And I know that if we had more, we would be able to share it. Further. And I also um don't think that that. Moving um funding the way that the CSC did was. An attempt to slight any organization. It was an attempt to. Play by the rules that we were given and uh to see the impact. Of the work that organizations have done. And. Sometimes we have to, you know, just. Put put the money where the impact is. And that does not negate any of the efforts. Of any of these other organizations that do incredible work. And if if. You know, I would be happy personally to work with any of these organizations to help find more money from like outside federal, city, whatever. Um to see how we can. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let let me just stop you there because you're not actually allowed to do that.
Okay, okay, never mind. I don't, I won't do that because that's not legal. So I apologize.
And you're you're approaching ten minutes, Alder.
Okay, sorry. This has just been really, really hard. And I hope that folks understand that this is not just some kind of, well, we're gonna give money here or there and it's it's easy. I just wanted to kind of uh. Represent um the difficulty that we are all going through. And. I will stop now. Thank you so much. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for uh stopping me from being illegal and also. Going longer than I need to. Thank you.
You got it, Alder. Uh Alder Foster on the substitute.
Thank you, Mayor. Um it's late, I'll be brief. Um I just really wanted to. Bookmark this conversation, ask all my colleagues to bookmark this conversation. Uh there seems to be tremendous consensus around this horrible spot we're in, the insufficiency of the funds that are available. The clear needs in the community. And I want, I I I will recall this conversation. In budget. And I want us all to recall this conversation because there's a good chance that all these community organizations are not showing up. To try and get us to do the right thing at budget time. But I want us to bookmark this because in our last meeting, we approved six hundred thousand dollars of operating expense. For six more police officers. And we weren't having this conversation then and it seemed like an easy vote, I guess, to do that. And and the real vote's still in front of us during budget. But this right here, we have to, we have to carry this with us. And it's easy for us all to say it's not fair, this isn't right, there's not enough money, we shouldn't be in this position, we shouldn't be pitting organizations against each other. But we actually can do something about it. Not tonight, we're gonna pick winners and losers tonight. But we do have decisions that we can make and we can, we can put more money towards this. These needs are not just needs because of COVID. We heard from folks tonight that are working on the front lines. These are, these are existing needs, they're gonna be there. I'm just asking all of you to to, all the emotions that everybody's felt tonight, please don't lose them, please don't forget them. And let's let's pull these back up. When we're in a position to allocate hundreds of millions of dollars of city, city dollars. And we're asked to make really hard decisions there, let's not forget about what we heard tonight because we do have choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyazi on the substitute.
Yeah, just a quick uh, a quick uh thought. I was just thinking to myself, it would be a lot easier. To probably work with city staff on some kind of uh, uh cuz it's not on city staff as far as coming up with a uh. Onenesses or things that we're supposed to be able to to make this a lot feasible. So it would be nice to actually, I don't know, even work with staff to come up with something that's a lot better. Cuz like when I did my homework for this, I actually reached out to uh Vera Court to see actually how many people they they served. And, you know, especially during the 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 um. Epidemic here, you know, I heard that they s- served, they told me that they served uh six hundred. Uh gave six hundred thousand dollars to families as far as the COVID relief. That was in a. Two thousand twenty and and two thousand twenty one, a hundred and forty thousand. But also too, not just, um I asked them all who they served. It was not just Latino uh community, but also African American immigrants too. So I asked them uh quite a few questions in order to to uh base my decision, but still. I think it's important that we all come together. I don't know if it's some kind of a uh presidential work group, but try to work with city staff on how to. Be, you know, do this in an equitable way. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett. For the second time.
Yes, for the second time. So. Y'all can be upset at me, but I'm gonna do it anyways. Um. After thinking about this more, like I said before, I feel like there should be a compromise. And I know I I my heart goes out to. Vice President Martin, like with just, it's a very hard decision and it's, this is breaking all our hearts. I do think that there. Isn't equity if we're not including. Mong and South Asian folks in this and that. Freedom Inc. Should be considering and have the opportunity to have some of these funds. So. You can be mad at me, but I'm gonna do it anyways because I think it needs to be done. Um. Don't shake your heads, um Miss Mayor. Um I would love to propose an amendment. To the substitute motion. Um if we can take. Twenty five K from Central and the Latino Academy and give it to Freedom Inc. Um for the purposes of including um everyone in this and coming to. Hopefully a win-win situation for us. Is that permissible?
Although you can make the amendment, um if you really, really want to.
I would love to make that amendment because I.
Alder, pause. We need to see if there's a second. Is there a second for Alder Bennett's amendment? Alder Curry will second. Alder Bennett, you wanna speak to it?
I kind of have been speaking to it. Um but like I said, there is inequity if we're not including them. Um we need to recognize that not on all undocumented people are of Latin American origin. But I also think. That. Community Services Committee's um. Proposal was great, however, they didn't consider Freedom Inc. within their documents. And this community deserves to be considered. So um I. Believe that this will help rectify some of the. Heartbreak that we're facing. Um and put everyone together. In this.
Alright, on the Bennett amendment, just so we're clear, Alder, you're proposing to take uh. Two hundred and fifty thousand each from Centro. And the Latino Academy? And to direct that to Freedom Inc?
Not two hundred fifty thousand, twenty five thousand.
Excuse me, twenty five thousand each? Okay, just so everybody's clear. Um on the Bennett amendment. Is there discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection if I speak from the chair?
Seeing no objection, um I just want to add into this conversation my experience as an alder. In my first budget. I tried left and right to line item funds to individual agencies. I was directly lobbied by a number of different service agencies. Everybody wanted their twenty five K, their fifty K. And and it became a frankly, a free for all. And it was incredibly poor process. It was very unfair. It ended up with bad feelings all the way around. And I cannot recommend strongly enough to you. That you contain yourselves to deciding between the staff recommendation and the committee recommendation. I think that trying to dig in on the council floor to different allocations is a recipe for disaster. Not just tonight, but it sets you all up to be directly lobbied by every single nonprofit in this community. Without process, asking for direct allocations and line items in the budget. And I really do not think that you all want to go there. Not least because it will be disastrous for our budget process. So I cannot recommend strongly enough that you recu- you reject this amendment. And that you decide between the committee's recommendations. And the staff recommendation. On the question of the Bennett amendment, Alder Alboras.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Um Alder Bennett, I appreciate the the amendment that you're putting forth. Um. I would encourage my colleagues to to not support this. Um I think we have before us two options. Um one in which, you know, the Community Services Committee, which is a committee that is again comprised of members of our community. Um that the mayor has put forth for appointment and we as a council have confirmed. Um that showed at some point that we felt that these folks had, you know, a diverse voice, an important perspective. And um they do, they really, really do. And so. Um what I think we have before us is, you know, the staff's. Recommendation, which I think that we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community um as to why those recommendations are problematic. And then I think we had a a body um that very often sends us recommendations. Um that really put in a lot of work and effort to, from what they saw. To rectify or to put forth a, from their perspective, the best product available for us to consider. So I think that we should. Um, you know, my, I would say like to, you know, my suggestion would be to vote on this amendment. To then take it to the substitute, which I've moved. And I'd encourage us to just go based off of the substitute, which is the Community Services Committee. Recommendation, which is in alignment with a lot of public comment that we heard tonight as well. And if you as council members don't agree with that, then we have the main motion before us, which is the alternate, which is the staff recommendation. So that'd be what I would uh. Encourage this body to 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 remain within those two options tonight.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett on your amendment.
Yes. So I have to say that I struggled with deciding whether or not to propose this because I think that a lot of us on council. Including from what we just heard from our chair, is these established ideas of what is and what is not processed. But what I heard from today from staff was that we're supposed to be putting people over process. And honestly, you cannot tell me, not any twenty of you, that you have not been lobbied. By any of these organizations during the budget process. During the budget process, this might have been my first time going through it. But it was like hell on earth receiving calls all the time from all these different people to lobby me one way or the other. So you cannot tell me that lobbying didn't happen. You cannot tell me that lobbying didn't happen for this vote that we're having right now. On whether to vote for one or the other. So we're gonna be lobbied either way. That's, and I I don't accept that argument. Um and our job is to legislate and to come to the right decision of what we think is, of what we feel is right. Yes, we charge committees with giving us recommendations, but it's ultimately our decision as council to decide. What we wanna do with this ARPA funds. So I think that if you strongly believe that um Mong people should be included in this. And you're willing to go against the status quo and all these established systems and whatever is traditional or not, then. I encourage you to support this amendment.
Alder, I have no other alders in the queue, so on the Bennett amendment, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor of reallocating funds uh within the substitute. I, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice President Martin.
Uh yes, sorry, yes.
Martin, I. Alder Miyazi.
No.
Alder Miyazi, no. Alder Revere.
No.
Alder Revere, no. Alder Viver.
No.
Alder Viver, no. Alder Wiheli.
No.
Wiheli, no. Al- President Abbas.
No.
President Abbas, no. Alder Alboras.
No.
Alder Alboras, no. Alder Benford.
No.
Alder Benford, no. Alder Bennett.
Yes.
Bennett, I. Alder Carter.
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Conklin.
Um, no.
Alder Conklin, no. Alder Kiri.
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Evers.
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figaro Cole.
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Foster. Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman.
No.
Furman, no. Alder Halv- Halverson.
Nope.
Halverson, no. Alder Harrington McKinney.
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Leimer.
No.
Alder Leimer, no. We have uh five ayes, fifteen noes.
Fifteen noes, that amendment fails. We're back to the substitute. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion on the substitute.
Seeing no further discussion on the substitute. Aldo Martin.
I, my apologies, I would like my vote to be switched, I. I apologize, uh, misunderstood the motion too much, so I I apologize to my colleagues.
Thank you, Aldo Martin, so on that last vote, you'll be marked as voting no. Correct, okay, the clerk, please make a note. Um, back to the substitute. On the substitute, Aldo Alboras.
It sounds like you were about to do the roll call, but if you wouldn't mind just sharing the clarification of what a vote of yes or no is on this and I would. Centering the Community Services Committee recommendation.
Absolutely, Aldo Alboras, so the the motion before us is the substitute. Um, which it came from the Community Services Committee, so. The, in essence, the substitute is the committee, the committee's recommendations. The alternate is the staff recommendations, and so. When we get to a vote on this, an aye vote. Is for the committee's recommendations and a no vote would take us to consider the staff recommendations. So an aye vote is for the committee's recommendations and no vote is, would take us to considering. The the staff recommendations. Aldo Figaro Cole on the substitute.
Thank you, Mayor, I know this is my second time. Speaking, so, I mean, again, we. As as it has been said already, I know that mine's already made up. And I just want to once again remind ourselves that we have responsibility to center. Then to center. Our actions on the needs of marginalized communities. So it's not, I mean, this idea that. One group is above the other or knows better than the than the other when they are all in this under the same category. It's really, it really has, I find it extremely disturbing, so I am going to be. As blunt as I'm usually am, and I'm just again going to address the largest. Community marginalized community. In our nation and in the city of Madison and. Remind them that we have an opportunity as the largest. As the largest minority community in this city to set an example on how we should be treating each other. We should definitely be trying to be. To find collaborations out outside of our little niches and our above, outside of our little groups. We should be, we should be reaching out to the um, um, black community, the African community, the. The Asian community, we should be actually making deliberate efforts to include them in the decisions that we make. I mean, I know that. Often, we are seen as a new Alder that don't know what the heck we're doing here. But I've been on this city for thirty years, so it's not like I just woke up um, back in April and realized that we have. That we have these different groups that are. So separate from each other that has so many experiences that are the same. So as the largest community in this city. We have a responsibility to set an example and to really. Focus on the issues that we're trying to solve, especially if the issues are the same. There there may be different. Um, variables, but at the at the core of it, it the the need is the same, the pain is the same. People really go through the same, the same processes. So. And then the second part, I wanna go nice keyword there, process. It is, it is good that we criticize how we use process around here, but I have heard that criticism a few times. What is not good about it is just to criticize it and do nothing about it. So let's get real, let's put processes in place and that should start with us. Let's make sure that this process works, staff doesn't need to tell us after today. That they need a process, obviously, there's a process that needs to be implemented that needs to be stronger, so let's work together as. As a unit to put processes in place that are, that are the baseline to better serve our community. Thank you for giving me the time to speak again, I appreciate it, and again, oh, one thirteen, I'm sorry. I take it back, funding, it was my first budget season and it was pretty, pretty crazy. So. I have been looking for funding and community services since the day, the day after we we finished our budget season. So it's not like the easiest task that I have, I have made, I have taken over myself to do. So definitely any allies that want to join that cause. Just, just please feel free to connect, because we definitely need to find ways. To raise the budget for this particular section of C D B. It's not, it's underfunded and we all know that, and I understand ma- the mayor's um, input. You know, and I understand other people's inputs about, we cannot serve everybody. But we, there's, there is a need that indeed came before COVID and. We we must do better, we must do better for for that need, we need to find ways to to. Um, raise that budget for, to help more people, so that's all I have, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alder. The motion before us is the substitute, the recommendations of the Community Services Committee. All those in favor of the committee's recommendations, I, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Vice President Martin.
Aye.
Vice President Martin, I, Miyazi.
Aye.
Sorry, Aldo Miyazi, aye. Aldo Revere.
Aye.
Aldo Revere, aye, Aldo Vidver. Aldo Vidver, aye, Aldo Wiheli.
Aye.
Aldo Wiheli, aye. President Abbas.
Aye.
President Abbas, aye, Aldo Alboras.
Yes.
Aldo Alboras, aye, Aldo Benford.
Aye.
Benford, aye, Aldo Bennett.
Yes.
Bennett, aye, Aldo Carter.
Come back to me.
Very well, Aldo Conklin.
No.
Aldo Conklin, no, Aldo Kiri. Aldo Curry, no, Aldo Evers.
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye, Aldo Figaro Cole.
No.
Aldo Figaro Cole, no, Aldo Foster. I'm sorry, say again?
No.
Aldo, Aldo Foster, no, Aldo Furman.
No.
Aldo Furman, was that no?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much, Aldo Furman, no, Aldo Halverson.
Aye.
Aldo Halverson, aye, Aldo Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Aldo Harrington McKinney, aye, Aldo Eck.
No.
Aldo Heck, no, Aldo Lemmer.
Aye.
Aldo Lemmer, aye, Aldo Carter.
Aye.
Aldo Carter, aye, I've got fourteen ayes, six noes.
Cue with fourteen ayes and six noes, that motion passes. We've adopted the committee's recommendations. And that will take us to item fifty-nine. Uh, item fifty-nine is a substitute. Uh, approval for the the Imagination Center at Rindell Park operating plan. As outlined in the twenty twenty-two Capitol Budget Amendment Number Three. It's Legislaw six nine three six zero. Um, on item fifty-nine, President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Aldo Evers, do you have a question?
Wondering if we could take a five-minute break?
Aldo Evers, I anticipate this being relatively quick.
I'm not so sure, Mayor.
Aldo Evers moves a five-minute break, is there a second? Uh, Aldo Figaro Cole will second. Alright, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of a five-minute recess? Seeing no objection, we are recessed until eleven fifteen P M. We're about one minute out, folks. Alright, eleven fifteen, having arrived, I'll ask council members to come back and turn their cameras on again. And I will ask the clerk to take his time calling the roll.
Understood, Madam Mayor. Vice President Martin.
Here.
Vice President Martin is present, Aldo Miyazi.
Present.
Miyazi is present, Aldo Revere.
Here.
Revere is present, Aldo Vidver. Aldo Vidver is present, Aldo Wiheli.
Present.
Wiheli is present.
Present.
Thank you, Aldo, President Abbas.
Present.
President Abbas is present, Aldo Alboras.
Here.
Alboras is present, Aldo Benford.
Present.
Or Benford is present, Aldo Bennett.
Here.
Aldo Bennett is present, Aldo Carter. Get right back, Aldo Conklin. Aldo Conklin is present, Aldo Curry.
I'm here.
Thank you, Aldo Curry is present, Aldo Evers. Right back, Aldo Figaro Cole.
Here.
Figaro Cole is present, Aldo Foster.
Present.
Aldo Foster is present, Aldo Furman.
Present.
Aldo Furman is present, Aldo Halverson.
Present.
Aldo Halverson is present, Aldo Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Aldo Harrington McKinney is present, Aldo Heck.
Here.
Aldo Heck is present, Aldo Lemmer.
Here.
Aldo Lemmer is present. Aldo Carter is present, I see. And, uh, let's see, Aldo Evers. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, we're on item fifty-nine, we have a motion to adopt. Uh, are there questions for staff on item fifty-nine? Seeing no questions for staff, uh, is there discussion on item fifty-nine, Aldo Furman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I pulled this item not because I'm looking to prolong this already long meeting. Um, but I didn't think it was appropriate to just let this item pass on consent. Um, it's hard to say no to a new library, so I don't think tonight's vote will be a surprise. I wanna thank staff for putting together the detailed memo on the expected operating costs of this proposed new library. Uh, before construction moves forward, I believed it was important for us to understand best as possible the project's impact on our long-term budget. I absolutely recognize and respect the data about the need for this library. This evening, we saw much debate about community service funding. And we have and will continue to spend a lot of time on this council debating how to fund a long list of community needs. Although building this new library doesn't obligate us to actually fund it in the future, I think it's a pretty strong expectation that once we build it, we will. Fund it, um, we all know about our structural deficit, so I didn't ask Director Schmiedeke to give us an update, and we got an update at our last meeting. But with the cost of continuing our current services increasing faster every year. Um, at a rate faster than we can increase our revenue. Uh, future councils will have enormous struggles fulfilling our existing, let alone our future needs. When I first learned about this project, uh, the rough cost was somewhere around a million dollars a year. And now we're being told it will be cost at least one point seven million dollars a year. I know my colleagues have a long list of services I'd like to see throughout the city, many would argue their lists are all needs as well. Everything from more cops, body cameras, increased bus service, more money for community organizations. And and more staff in many understaffed departments. I know we're not in a position this evening where we have to make a choice about where the funds for this uh, project, to operate this project comes from. But I think it will be, uh, and I think it was at least important for us to pause for a few minutes, possibly have a discussion. But at least recognize that we're just simply not going to be able to afford to do everything we're already already doing. I can't support a path that will obligate us to spend a a lot more and set the council up to have to make. Even more incredibly hard decisions about where to move funding from, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, and my apologies to Aldo Evers, it appears you're correct, Aldo Figaro Cole.
Thank you, Mayor, so I was one of the people that um, recommended this for. And from the Finance Committee, and at the minute I I took the vote, I clearly said I. I was extremely conflicted and. And I I knew I was gonna regret the vote, because as much as I love this project, as much as I see all the. Positive impact, as as much, I mean, this is one of those projects that has so much. Is centered in on inclusion and is centered on on. On equity, just like the, what we were just discussing a minute ago. And it has, and and the library provides so many services that that really impact. The things that I am passionate about, I mean, the people that I care about the most. Um, I I just don't see how can we add this to an operating budget. Year after year, when we cannot add a couple million dollars to the customers, to the community services. Um, division of the C D B, if we can, if we can support organizations. That are already struggling, how are we going to fund this without making a building? And then having to lay off people because we can't afford to, or or. and then having to lay off people because we can't afford to, or, or close libraries all across the city because we can't afford all of these facilities? So I absolutely love this project. I have constituents. I have people that have reached out to me, and I have given them the same message that I'm sending out today. Love the project. I think it's amazing. I think that is something that we should do eventually. But how are we going to pay for that when we cannot support our community that is in dire need right now of services? I mean, that's, I, I will be voting no for this with a huge pain in my heart about it. Um, and again, probably going against the, against the current here. But, uh, I am, I cannot, I cannot, um, I, I won't feel good about saying a yes vote to this, knowing that there are other pressing needs that we should be addressing. So that's, that's why I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, this area is end up in my district, but before it end up in my district, uh, if it was in any, any Aldermanic district and before Alder Samba Champion, that, uh, library, I would support it. And, and I have a very straightforward reason to support this. I understand, right? There's always money issue, this issue, that issue. But when it come to real community impact, and I'm giving you my, yes, an immigrant example, moving to New York City, and I choose New York City libraries and, and get the advantage, uh, through their libraries. And we have seen, you know, the thing which really distinguish US among other part of the world is US education system as compared to developing part of the world, and libraries, which is a tool of economic development, which is a tool of academic, which is also a tool of activism. Lot of LGBTQ movement, lot of other movements, they all, uh, their, their path all goes through libraries. And, um, unfortunately, the part of world I am from, uh, there is a lack of libraries. There are no funding available. Of course, as a developing part of the world, when you come to US, I think sometimes people forget there is some privilege to be born in US, but then it, it really depend what is your color, and then your privileges really depend on your color, unfortunately. Um, and this community over here is absolutely underserved, and they're mostly people of color. And this particular location area was selected by the consultant, not by any policymaker, and it's selected with the eye of equity where kids and community can take services. Approximately fifteen hundred northeast Madison household, or you can say fourteen percent of northeast resident do not have internet access in their home or mobile data plan. And now disparities are so high because of COVID and economic crisis, these numbers are even higher. In those type of situation, me voting against the library, I don't feel, uh, this is the right move. I, again, I respect both Alders about fiscal deficit, and I'm also extremely concerned about fiscal deficit as well. Also, the greater Sandberg neighborhood, uh, is also childcare desert. Uh, according to the Center for American Program, and, uh, that's, that's library provide really much-needed service around kids and youth. And the youth population around Rindell Park area is growing. And from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, it grown around twenty point one percent. So there's a high amount of youth there. And there are kids in that community, and, and this whole Rindell Imagination Center is not a library. The name, it speak to itself. It's Imagination Center, where you get a lot of services, especially for youth and kids. Uh, community impact and, and the help community will get, especially in that area, is much needed. And again, we've just been through this whole helping undocumented immigrants. Let me remind this council, and, and I saw Alder Halverson had his race after me, and he, it was part of his district, so he can speak, uh, perhaps better than me, uh, about that district. But my limited knowledge, uh, or the knowledge I gain, there's a huge amount of African population, African immigrants, if there. There's a huge amount of Latino population, Mung population, Asian population, link that part of the city. And unfortunately, or fortunately, however you phrase it, the, that, that city, uh, is underserved, and city is already going through a lot of environmental justice, not to go into a broader debate at eleven twenty-six PM. I do think so. They deserve a chance to have a, a world-class facility of, uh, which way they can get the service. So I will encourage all the orders, uh, to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, so I do appreciate, um, President Abbas's words, and, and everything he said is, is true. Um, this, this, uh, library was, is ten years in the making. And, and it goes from my predecessor, as, as mentioned, uh, former Alder Samba Balde, and his predecessor, uh, Alder Classius. This has been in the works for a long time, and, and Director Mickles has done phenomenal work to prepare the way for this over all of these years. And phenomenal work working with the foundation, phenomenal work on determining how they're going to staff this going forward. And we've accommodated. I think he's accommodated quite well. Matter of fact, um, my esteemed colleague from District Nineteen's request that we have a more detailed listing, uh, of path, roadmap of what the, um, operating costs are going to be. I think he's done phenomenal work. His whole team has. And I think we've satisfied that, and we have yet more discussions to have in a couple more years when we get closer to that as well, is to really fine-tuning that and the projections there. And I'm sure they'll change between now and then. Maybe they'll go down. We'll see. Uh, because there's work that's continuing to run to ensure that we can support this library in what was, what is a very, um, underserved area. Now, we talk about, we just got out of several hours, and I think there was pretty much all agreement on, uh, undocumented residents and, and underserved populations, both, uh, Latinx and the Mung, and, uh, of course, um, our people of color and, uh, black communities, all of them reside right here. Uh, right next to where this is going to be, right next to Rindell Park. And in fact, I was side by side with some local, um, heroes, I call them, and they're not even affiliated necessarily with any organizations, but, uh, throughout the pandemic, providing, uh, eat food for many of the residents, uh, many undocumented residents out of their garage because there's no place to do it. And so when we talk about, yes, yes, the deficit, yes, we need to be conscious of how we're spending our money, but we also know that we spend our money on where, on the things that are important to us. And so we just got out of a discussion saying what's important to us in these communities. And this is going to serve those communities. And so I, I don't want to go on and on because there's a lot here, but here we are again, and we have more decisions to make down the road on this. But I think we satisfied the, the ask, uh, with regards to the operating plan. I think Director Mickles has done phenomenal work. And so I urge you to approve this, and we'll continue to have discussions, and we will continue to work on our deficit and our budgets. And we're going to put our money where our priorities are. And to me, I think this falls clearly in where our priorities need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thank you. So I feel compelled to speak on this as a library board member and someone that honestly loves libraries and being a member of libraries has honestly changed my life and helped me get into college and everything, all the things. Um, so I, I guess I come at this with a bit of an anecdote. After my mom passed, uh, my dad and I had a lot of financial issues. Um, we lived like month to month on our social security check that we got after my mom passed. Um, and, um, growing up in that situation, I didn't have a computer, um, didn't have Wi-Fi at home, and would walk thirty minutes to the library every single day after school. Um, well, walk home thirty minutes every day after school. Um, because the library is where, the only place I had to go where I could access a computer and do my homework. Um, and so I give that anecdote for two reasons. Um, one, I feel like, like Alder, Ald- Alder Halverson just said, this has been ten years in the making. A- and I think a lot of times in the city, we think of ourselves as we're living month to month. Or in our case, we're living in our budget year to year. And a good friend of mine has given me the advice of investing in myself and saving money for myself, at least a hundred dollars a month, which I now do. Um, and I think that this is an investment in ourselves, in the long-term future of our city. Um, and I also see that how this can be an investment for all the folks, uh, that are experiencing homelessness, that are experiencing poverty, that, um, just, um, need a community to go to. So I, I do understand where my fellow Alders are coming from, that this is a significant financial expense. Howl, however, I also believe that us as a city deserve to invest in our fin- in our future.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all my colleagues before who shared comments. I can't say that I disagree with anyone. But, um, I do, uh, as a Finance Committee member, find a lot of synergy with what both Alder Far- Furman and Alder Figueroa Cole mentioned in terms of our structural deficits and our responsibility as Finance Committee members to, um, keep in mind the financial longevity of our city and being able to provide the services. Um, I'm also an Alder that totally understands coming into office and knowing that projects have been tried and failed, um, long before me, uh, i.e. the ambulance we just got. Um, so I, it's not about not investing in communities, not looking at equitable, um, issues with equity, um, in serving communities, but it's about, to me, what's right, right now. And I think the fact that we just had a hours-long debate about an RFP over basic services, like whether or not to keep people in their homes, or how they are feeding themselves and their families. Um, again, with so many rich resources, and we don't have enough, um, it, 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 it's difficult for me to vote at this specific time with our financial, um, situation, knowing that we're still not out of the pandemic, so, um. I supported this before, just like Alder Figueroa Cole, and had a lot of, uh, inner tur- turmoil, um, but just wanted to share that that's where that comes from, and that's why I, my vote has changed from the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Well, I just want to say that Alder Bennett has a very, very, um, um, smart friend there that, that is looking out for her. Um, sure she, I'm sure she or he is amazing. Um, but I just want, again, to, to go back to exactly what Alder Curry just said. At this time, we are still in the middle of this pandemic. We're still trying to get our, our grounded, to get our feet running. I, I'm, yeah, I mean, I wish we, we could, yeah, I wish we weren't here today. I mean, it is just, it's just like a set of unfortunate events and, and but yeah, I, again, thank you, Alder Bennett, for sharing your, your personal stories, uh, with, with us. Um, but again, please take it that I am, I absolutely love this idea, but not at this moment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I spent, um, my first, uh, two terms, almost three terms, on the library board. And I absolutely support the vision of the Imagination Center. I was on the library board when, uh, the Penny Branch Library was first conceived. And to walk through that space now, um, it is, um, immaculate. And what, um, what we don't know, and, and probably my previous Alder knows serving on the library board, is is that there is a very engaged, um, library board, a library committee. And, um, the reason, I think that the reason that the, um, Penny Branch Library, um, came into flo- fruition is the phenomenal support from the community. That's one thing. Um, we have the Ashley, um, Alicia Ashley Branch Library. It's under renovation. The Monroe Street Library just opened, um, full hours. A small library that is not even accessible in terms of the lower level. The libraries have been, uh, a, a place where individuals, especially our children, can go. And so as we're talking about the health vitality of our neighborhoods, we've got an area, um, where the library, the new library is proposed, um, has under- undergone such a tremendous transformation. Um, and it's not a positive transformation. Um, it is in dire need of something that will stabilize and revitalize that area. The library, I'm, I'm, I'm so convinced that that will be the key to revitalize that area, not just for, um, uh, older adults, for the young people, for the schools. There's absolutely nothing in that area. If we could fund all of the nonprofits in this city to the maximum, we would still not solve all of the problems that we have to face and that we have to deal with. Um, to think that if we had money to fund, um, all of the nonprofits, uh, we wouldn't need police, or we wouldn't need this, um, that is an illusion that is not based on fact. It is that all of these entities working together to have a better life for all. And the investment of a library board, the investment of, of, of the, those who have worked so hard to develop this Imagination Center, to stop and say, well, let's just stop here because we cannot afford it. Well, we cannot afford not to have a library in that area. And to stop and say, the investment that we have already made, we need to, to, to slow that down or just disregard that is utterly, um, I'm not going to say ridiculous. It's, it's hard for me to imagine that all of the monies that we've already spent toward the Imagination Center, the investments and what the, what has gone into place, you're saying that we're not going to move forward. And so I am going to support the Imagination Center, what it can bring. I'm a Westsider, so, you know, I'm not even over on that, uh, that side. But I absolutely know that the library can reinvigorate that community. And if, if, if that's what we can, um, uh, project and depend on and invest in, I absolutely ask for, uh, my colleagues to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
I'm gonna be as brief as I can. I am gonna support this. It's a long time coming. And if you've ever been in that area, you know there are no gathering spaces. To have a meeting, you would have to rent a banquet room at one of the hotels. You have East Town, but there's no place to gather, and there's no library close by. This is an area who has really been waiting for this. And we can no longer afford to kick the can. And I'm gonna vote for this tonight. Thank you. And I urge you to vote for it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Come here. Um, yeah, I'm just gonna join those colleagues that, um, reluctantly, uh, do not support this. Um, it's, it's kind of impossible to vote against a new library. Um, I think we all understand the importance and the benefits of it. But I'm, I have no idea, um, what's gonna happen to our budget, uh, in, in a couple of years. And adding one point seven million dollars of ongoing operating costs, I'm, I'm really concerned. We're gonna probably, you know, future council, maybe many of us aren't on the council at that time, but we're gonna be in a situation where we're but we're gonna be in a situation where we're talking about layoffs, to be honest. And, you know, that's that's real. And the idea of building a beautiful new facility that we cut staff back on because we can't, we can't afford it, and we cut staff back in all kinds of other areas, I just, I feel like we're not being realistic. And, um, yeah, uh, the, the, this part of town deserving a library, a hundred percent. But I don't, I just don't see how we're doing it. And I feel like if we just look at every single thing and say, is this, is this, is this a good idea? Is this worthwhile? And we keep saying yes. I just, I think we're gonna get stuck really fast here. And we're, we're gonna have to start to make some hard decisions and say no to some really good things. So, um, I, I also can't support it at this time.
Thank you, Aldo. Um, I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. Motion is to adopt. Um, anticipating disagreement, we'll have a roll call. All those in favor of adoption, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On adoption, uh, Vice President Martin.
No.
Vice President Martin, no. Aldo Miyazze.
Yes.
Miyazze, aye. Aldo Reverir.
Aye.
Reverir, aye. Aldo Vitiver.
Aye.
Aldo Vitiver, aye. Aldo Waelhelia.
Aye.
Waelhelia, aye. President Abbas.
Aye.
President Abbas, aye. Aldo Obros.
Yes.
Obros, aye. Aldo Benford.
Aye.
Aldo Benford, aye. Aldo Bennett.
Aye.
Aldo Bennett, aye. Aldo Carter.
Aye.
Aldo Carter, aye. Aldo Conklin.
Uh, sorry, uh, that's a no. Uh, no.
Aldo, Aldo, Aldo Conklin, no. Thank you. Aldo Curry.
No.
Aldo Curry, no. Aldo Evers.
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye. Aldo Figueroa Cole.
No.
Aldo Figueroa Cole, no. Aldo Foster.
Uh.
Aldo Foster, no. Aldo Furman.
No.
Aldo Furman, no. Aldo Har- Alverson.
Aye.
Aldo Halverson, aye. Aldo Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Aldo Harrington McKinney, aye. Aldo Heck.
No.
Aldo Heck, no. Aldo Lemmer.
Aye.
Aldo Lemmer, aye. We have thirteen ayes, seven noes.
Thank you. With thirteen ayes, the item passes. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight, unless there are any introductions from the floor. Seeing none, Aldo Martin, it's your turn.
I move adjournment.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.